Interesting trivia fact, we have a, can't name the staff member, but was a part of a band decades ago called Texas Territory. So, we're trying to encourage that staff member to get the band back together, but.
Good to have them.
We need some pictures from that.
That's why, yeah.
I live very deep in the archives.
They have the big hair.
I'm, 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 I'm a hairband, huge long hair, curls, a lot of hairspray.
Alright, so at 8:19, I call this workshop to order. This is the special budget workshop to Saginaw City Council, so welcome. My understanding is that the camera and the video feed is going to kick off, so hello, hope somebody's watching. I do get occasional comments from people that they actually watch, so that's good. I'm glad we do see some people taking advantage of this. Couple things before we kick off, I wanted to do just a brief, I asked Gabe to give me a couple minutes to do a brief overview. You know, today is budget workshop, we won't vote anything today, but we'll make some decisions. So I encourage folks to ask a lot of questions, seek input, just try to understand. I use this data to learn, understand where we are, what we want to do, and where we go. We are a legislated body, so one of our big chores is the budget. City has to have a budget by October 1st, just sort of how it is to keep operations, and we're responsible for that. We're responsible for the tax rate, we're responsible for the budget, it's some of our big duties. Legislative, I want to stress legislative body per the charter, that's who we are, that's what we do. We don't get involved in the day-to-day management, that's Gabe and his staff, so this is one of our big jobs for the year. I encourage folks to ask questions, to listen to staff, to understand. I want folks to have a good discussion today, I encourage folks to be respectful. We need to learn from each other and understand where we are. Just remember, we're all here for Saginaw, we're all here for the betterment of the city. We all want Saginaw to be a great place, a great community for us and our families, so that's why we're here. All this is as a part of that, it's complicated, it's sometimes painful, but it is the process that we have to go through to get to a budget. Just sort of what it is and who we are. So with that, turn it over to City Manager Gabe Brayden.
Mayor and Council, if you'll recall, we began talking about the budget back in March. So, we've had a series of workshops by fund since that time at regularly scheduled council meetings. So Kim will go over a few slides with you. We will highlight any changes since the last time you've seen this. A lot of the smaller funds are, you know, there's minimal changes, there are no changes. I would anticipate most of our discussion would be focused on the utility fund and general fund, which also happened to be our most recent set of workshops. Some of that is by design, because we get better information related to rates and property values and that sort of thing later in the summer. So with that, I will turn it over to Kim.
Can I interrupt real quick? I forgot something, my apologies. Today is somebody's birthday, so happy birthday Charles.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, sir.
Will you lead in the song?
We're definitely not going to sing.
Okay.
Absolutely not. I did want to say, Charles, he didn't get the memo that that seat requires shorts on a day like today, so the, it is hot outside, but feel free to wear shorts next time, your predecessor certainly did, so. But, happy birthday, sir. Sorry you have to spend here doing this, but we appreciate it.
Okay, we'll just jump right in. The first fund that we went over is the donations fund. Since the last time you've seen it, we've just added the estimated, a train and grain budget. The first time you saw it, we just had the train and grain budget in the general escrow fund, because we're funding part of that from hotel motel tax, but we're also collecting donations. So the estimated amount of donations and a budget for the train and grain festival is included here. We've also included $10,000 in parks donations for electrical service for the holiday light display. On June 18th, you all approved additional lights for the holiday lighting, and electrical service is required to light those up. So we're using $10,000 from parks donations in this fund. Those are the only changes that have been made to the donations fund since the last time you've seen it. And I'm just going to go through fund by fund and highlight the changes. If you've got questions as we go along, please feel free to interrupt and ask them. The next fund is the general escrow fund. Again, the only fund, the only change is here is we moved the majority of the budget from this fund into the donations fund, as I just explained. And then we also removed funding for the chamber, since that is dissolved. In the drainage utility fund, the only numbers that have changed is a small amount of the, the numbers have changed by a small amount, and those are the transfers to the general fund and the transfers to the enterprise fund. And that's just related to worker, to compensation of employees. As we got better numbers on what the health insurance rates are going to be and TMRS rates, those numbers changed slightly to accommodate that. The other thing that changed by a small amount is the project for the, the cost estimates for the construction of the Phase 2 East Cement Creek Drainage Project. Initially, in the 1819 budget, we had designed for Phases 2 and 3 to be completed, and then construction of Phase 2 in 1920. They're not completely finished with the design on Phase 3. So, they're going to finish up design on Phase 3 in 1920, as well as begin on construction on Phase 2. So there's a little bit of a change in the planning of that project. In the Crime Control and Prevention District Fund, again, the only change that has been made is the transfer to the general fund to pay for the 10 patrol officers, the jailer, the dispatcher, and half of the SRO. And again, that's just related to the cost of benefits. So it's the same amount of people being funded, the amount just changed by a little bit. In the Street Maintenance Fund, there have been no changes since the last time we discussed this fund. I would like to mention, though, I know something that all of y'all are interested in usually is the street inventory, and that is included in the binder that you got week in, a couple days ago. Next fund is the Enterprise Fund. This fund, again, has not changed since the last time you saw it, except for the changes in the personnel costs. We had the information from the engineers on the capital projects, so the estimates for the capital projects are the same as what we discussed a couple weeks ago, when we talked about this fund during a council workshop at a regular city council meeting.
You remind me, we're replacing 50% of the water meters. How many would that be? How many water meters? Do we have 6,000? So we're replacing roughly 3,000 approximately, okay. And then we'll do the next 50% next year, that's the plan?
And the Enterprise Escrow Fund, there's been no changes to this. The big item here is just the Saginaw 16-inch water line, Phase 2. And that's going to be funded with impact fees, so the impact fees are collected in this fund and transferred to the Enterprise Fund to fund that project.
Mr. Mayor, just want to make one note. We will be able to decrease water rates 5%, which is always positive, so that will be reflected in customer bills.
The Capital Projects Fund, the engineers talked about this fund. The only project that we've got in the Capital Projects Fund at this point is the Bailey-Boswell Overpass. These numbers have changed just based on the timing of the project.
That $4 million, we gotten that yet, or is that, how is that going to be paid? How is that going to work?
It's going to be on a reimbursement basis.
It's 5.5.
Right.
And it'd be reimbursed quarterly as we submit invoices for construction.
Oh, okay. Because we only have four here, but I knew it was 5.5, but we did not list the other 1.5 million?
Well, if that's based on the count on the budget here, we expect to get four up in 5.5.
Oh, I see. I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. On the slide previous, Capital Projects Fund expenditures, the very last page, it has a figure of $8,830,000, which is for the overpass. And could you just explain that a little bit more?
Again, it's just the timing, that's the amount that we expect that we will spend on the overpass in between October 1st of 2019 and September 30th of 2020. So it's not the full amount of the project, it's just the amount that we're estimating that will be spent in that time period.
In this fiscal year, okay.
The Debt Service Fund, there's no change since the last time we discussed it. It includes the estimated debt service on the tax note that's being proposed. We won't know that exact number until, to, not, I guess, the next council meeting, when we've actually gotten the bids for the tax note, know the interest and the debts, and the exact debt service schedule. So that brings us to the general fund. These numbers have changed a little bit. I have this slide here, because I'm a numbers person, but I know it's a lot to look at. The bottom line that I want you to see on this slide is that we're projecting to use $720,000 from fund balance for one-time items. That would leave you with an unrestricted fund balance of $1.45 million in this fund. In the, in the restricted fund balance, that's the 25% of ongoing expenditures, which is our proposed policy. The reserved fund balance, the 3.7, is the amount that's set aside for the estimated overage for the Bailey-Boswell overpass, and the amount that we've committed to, in the economic development agreement with the square. So the next slide shows the changes that have been made based on the discussion that we.
Just one note, Mayor and Council, so we've had some discussion with the principal, Farouk Wazarali, for the square. They have some preliminary plans submitted to text out for the signal to begin the street construction, which would be the first part of that. I believe within the next, it's in text outs court, but within the next couple of months, they should receive an approval and we'll get going, hopefully with the construction of that connecting street between Saginaw Boulevard and Old Decatur.
They should be receiving their text out approvals in the next actual couple of weeks. And then, at that point, they plan to have a revised construction schedule that they'll bring forward, and they'll actually set a groundbreaking date at that point, but it'll be before the end of the year.
Can we set something up that we get regular reviews or updates on this at council meetings? This is a pretty big project for us, can we do, I don't know what the appropriate timeframe would be, whatever council thinks. I don't know, quarterly, what do y'all think would be good to get, hear an update on this? What does anybody think on the square? Quarterly?
I think quarterly's fine.
Alright, let's just plan on that. Great. Thank you.
This next, the next slide just details the changes that have been made based on the discussion that we had at the last council meeting, changes that the city council made to the city manager's proposed budget. So the original proposed budget was the $16.7 million. If we increase the proposed tax rate by one cent, that would generate an additional $212,000 in tax revenue. We have found, the Chief Spears indicated to me that the same night that we had our first, our budget hearing on, our budget meeting workshop on the general fund, that Tarrant County Emergency Service District had a budget meeting as well. And they, we anticipate collecting an additional $8,820 from them, so that will increase our revenue. And then also based on the discussion of adding an emergency management coordinator, and that Lake Worth is willing to fund half of that project, that would increase revenues by about $71,000.
On that question, how committed is Lake Worth? Have they put that in their budget? Do we know where they are?
They didn't get it in their budget due to time constraints, and they had some organizational structure in their fire department that was really a deciding factor. What they have committed to is verbally doing it at mid-year for them. So not in October, but mid-year. Which realistically, for us to work out all the arrangement and to post the position, get the person, work out everything in particulars, that's likely when we would hire that person. So we will be ready to go at the end of March to put that person on, in service, or have them in place.
Lake Worth is committed to this and how committed they are, that was my question.
Mr. Mayor, one other note regarding Lake Worth, and Chief Spears might go into further detail. They're looking at the same proposal for fire dispatch service with the city of Fort Worth. So there'll be some planning for both. Should we move forward ourselves, Lake Worth and the city of Fort Worth, to transition over? So, the chiefs will be working together, and if the council chooses, then, you know, after we transition, if you'll recall, the, our public safety radios, that was about a six-month, nine-month process to move over, so it'd be pretty similar.
So have we budgeted a full year for the emergency manager?
We have, because this is the first I've heard that it was going to be mid-year.
So can we adjust that, since it looks like we're looking to mid-year target?
It's possible. You'll have to keep in mind that years going forward, you're going to have to find the funding for the full amount of.
Sure. It was the same situation we were in with economic development. We brought an economic development person on in the mid-year, and we had to make the adjustment in the following year. So essentially, we just need to be prepared for the full enchilada next year.
Excuse me. Do we anticipate any other expenses in trying to, training or setup with the, with this new officer?
Not anything that's projected, no ma'am. Everything that's reflected should be the cost for that position. Any training that might be required or anything that we didn't think about, we will absorb that in our normal operating budgets between the two cities.
We'll split everything. Training and everything will be split.
Yes, sir.
As we can.
Correct.
On the expenditure side, the proposed expenditures were $17.9 million. We added the cost of the emergency manager, that's the salary as well as benefits. And then the, a vehicle and a radio, that's the equipment, that would be one-time items. We added an additional police officer, so remember, in the original proposed budget, there was an officer added. This would add a second officer. The $90,000 is the salary and benefits, and then $5,500 for a radio and a body camera. And then it also shows the cost of an additional firefighter and a radio for the firefighter. And then the reductions in the Bailey-Boswell transfer, again, that was just a change based on the timing of the Bailey-Boswell overpass project. So that brings the change in the expenditures to $17,748,000.
Mayor, I have a question. I know it was brought up at the last council meeting about the, the percentage of the benefits was almost equivalent to the base salary. And, excuse me, looking at the, the insurance and all the other deductions, did that also, did that percentage also include overtime for that individual?
For the firefighter, it does include overtime, because.
And the police officer?
No, it does not include for a police officer. It does for firefighter, because firefighters get automatic overtime based on their work schedule. Fair Labor Standards Act require us to pay them a certain amount of overtime each shift. So the firefighter position does include that overtime. It doesn't include any overtime over and above what their regular shift would be.
Okay. And again, to address Patrick's question, he was looking at what, like an 80%? For the, for benefits compared to the base pay?
Well, actually, I think it was 63% is what I came up with after the meeting. And I believe that question was completely answered with the detail that was emailed out Wednesday? Was it Wednesday?
We, I don't know if it was Wednesday or Thursday. But we've, so it varies a little bit, but in general, it's about 60, 40. 60% compensation and 40% social security, TMRS, insurance, workers' compensation. We have information from the Bureau of Labor Statistics for government employees, and we're right on average. The average for them is about 62% actual compensation and 38% for benefits. So we're real close to what's average based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics information.
Thank you very much.
So just, there are a few things in addition to insurance, workers' comp, so on and so forth. I mean, we've got, especially with police officers and emergency management, some of the other figures that I saw in here were certification figures, or some training figures. There are things that are built in or baked into that total amount that may not necessarily be baked into other employees within the city's system.
That's, that's correct. There are other, there are other employees that receive certification pay, but not every employee does.
Right. For example, a road crew worker is probably not going to see the same training expenses and things of that nature that a police officer will see.
That's correct.
So, I've realized in looking at a couple other cities that those additions, where a police officer or firefighter probably carry the strongest markup in terms of labor burden because of the certifications, trainings, and so on and so forth that they have to go through. De-escalation being a big one in the last few years. So, all those add up. I was pretty surprised.
Thanks for getting that to me, Kim.
Sure. So this is the last slide that I have prepared, and then it's just a matter of discussion and questions. The original proposed tax rate was 45.9 cents. If you want to go up to the rollback rate, adding the additional cent, that's .469, 46.9 cents. And then the bottom part shows the change in an average tax bill. So the annual tax bill would go from $804.34 to $821.86. It would go from $4.39 per month to $5, or $5.85 per month.
What do we think, Council? What do we want to do on this? What is the wish of the council?
Mayor, I propose that we use the rollback rate, because this has been discussed, it's always easier to go backwards, we can't go any higher.
What does anybody else think? Mary?
Yes, I agree with what Cindy stated.
Okay. Charles? You okay? Okay. Valerie?
No, I would like to see the effective rate implemented, not the rollback rate. It's the 4.30.
I'm okay with the rollback rate.
Yeah. Okay. So the 4.69 gives us, we go back to the slide before that had the details, gives us those three positions, right? Emergency manager, police officer, and firefighter, correct?
That's correct.
That's what that rollback, that roughly one cent gives us those three positions. How do we feel about adding those three positions?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
That's in addition to the, the recurring, or the ongoing expenditures that were in the proposed budget built on the 45.9 cents. So the only two positions in the, under the 45.9 cent proposal was a police officer and a jailer. So these three positions would be in addition to that. So we would have two patrol officers, the jailer, these three positions, so. Councilmember Big Horse, while I'm thinking of it, made mention of this at our last meeting. While our city, or any city, contrary to kind of popular opinion on social media or the coffee shop elsewhere, the police department doesn't fund itself on citation revenue. When we have vacancies in the. When we have vacancies in the department, which we have a few now, we're, we're close hopefully to being able to fill them, dedicated traffic officers come off of that duty, and correct me if I'm wrong, inter-plug into patrol, patrol's the primary function. If we can get staffed up, that will help some amount of traffic control, which generates some unknown amount of revenue. Again, that's not why we do that, but with more staff, there's more resources available to do all the things that the department is engaged in.
Okay. All right, looking at this list, I think the emergency manager is one we really need to do. I think with the Lake Worth contribution and what that position does, it makes a lot of sense. The other two, I'm, you know, I'm fine if we do them or if we don't. We, I understand we, we need staff, but we also need to fill current vacancies, so maybe we don't need to put us off of a new position initially, we just need to fill staff, current staff. And firefighter, you know, we've added firefighter positions the last couple of years. Do we have to have this one if we add emergency manager? Maybe not. So that's sort of where I am, my thoughts on this. That would not get us the, would not do it at the 45 number, we'd have to go up some, some percentage, so. That's sort of my thoughts. So it's really, oh, Mary, go ahead.
With regard to the firefighter position and the police officer position, we have information from Chief Spears that indicates even with this addition, he's still not up to speed on what is, what is understood across the United States to be the appropriate amount of firefighters per thousand people. So even with this additional firefighter, we're still not to the point we should be, correct?
That is, that is correct. With the information I provided is, is what, although there's not a hard and fast standard, there are recommendations and we're below that recommendation. We've added one person since 2006. One person goes to one shift. It takes three firefighters to equal all the shifts and that make an actual impact in the department staffing. So even adding this one, we will still be requesting in the future another position when, when that's available to be funded.
And with the, with the police officer, I believe you're still not really where you need to be even with the addition of an, of an additional police officer. How far below what is considered appropriate would you be with the addition of the police officer?
Well, I'll have to admit that police service is not quite as organized as the fire service is in terms of creating those kind of ratios. Generally, our goal has been to try to stay somewhere around two, two per thousand police officers. So we're at about 1.73 right now. To actually get to two, we'd have to add about seven people. But again, our, my goal, short-term goal has been in additions, as Chief Spears noted as well, that to make a true impact, one person can count, but you have to have at least four. And it's actually, when you add in absentees, it's, you know, like 5.25 people per, to, to cover a one-person impact 24/7. So if we, we really need to get to one more officer per shift, which there's four shifts. And with these two additions, that would get us about halfway there, a little bit less than halfway there essentially.
Thank you.
Okay, council, other questions? Excuse me.
I have a few comments. So I did propose a strategy to put all of these folks on the payroll, including those that were asked about on Tuesday, the emergency manager, the additional officer, and firefighter. I received an email back from staff explaining some technicalities related to that proposal. I want to address those technicalities. Essentially, what we need to be looking at, in my opinion, is what our revenue forecasts are and how accurate those revenue forecasts really are in this budget. One thing that I did pay attention to was the franchise fee adjustment downward, nearly $60,000. That franchise fee adjustment is not realistic in my opinion because we're talking about a state law that was put into effect that impacts less than 10% of revenue stream feeding that account, and that's cable. The majority of that revenue account comes from gas and electric. And for every house we build, we're adding gas and electric. We know that we're putting houses on the ground at what rate? Around 300 per year right now?
Just before you go any further, I think we have a, and it's in your packet, but what tells that story the best would be the previous year's franchise revenue. You'll see that it continues to decline. So I'm looking at 2015, 2016. What page is that?
Page 21.
That's page 21 in your binder. So just for the purpose of an illustration, I'll call your attention to fiscal year 15, 16. The franchise revenue, and that was actual, was 1,839,384. I don't know what the population was in 15, 16, certainly before my time, far less than what it is now. We've continued to have growth and as you'll see, the franchise revenue continues to go down. So I'm hearing you and I understand, but the, the change from the state has impacted directly our general fund. If it's any consolation, it can always be worse. You think of the Fort Worth or bigger cities and they're looking at millions, so.
Well, I agree that it did see a downward tick between 16 and 17. We established a budget in 18 based upon that downward tick of 1.6 million. And you'll also see that in 19, we established that same amount. We held it at one point, actually, we went down just a fraction. We're at 1.633 in 19. But if you look at our forecast revenues for this year, 19, that has ticked significantly back up. It's 1.7 million. So it has gone the opposite direction. It has gone up $100,000.
Councilmember Far, you're correct in saying that the majority of the franchise fees are not Southwestern Bell or Charter. It's not the cable or communications. The majority is from Encore Atmos, Encore and Atmos. And, and the, you can't just do it based on projected population. It varies depending on the weather. Okay? So if you're, if it's a really hot year, people's electric bills are going to go up because they're paying for more air conditioning. It's something that we try to base on an average year, and that's what we're looking at when we estimate franchise fees. Franchise fees are an estimate. I mean, that's just, or not franchise fees, but the whole budget is just an estimate. We do it based on the best information that we have. We don't have a crystal ball. We do it on average. And so you are going to see fluctuations. You're going to see growth, but you're also going to see ups and downs depending on the weather. If people are using more heat in the, in the winter and it's a cold winter, then we're going to see an increase in the Atmos franchise fee that we get. If it's hot in the summer and we have a really hot summer, then people are using more electricity and that next year, we're going to see an increase in, in the electric franchise fee. So it, there's more factors than just growth.
So what, what I'm pointing out here though is for every dollar that we show a downtick in, in our revenue projections outside of our property tax, it puts more pressure on property tax to make up the gap. So if we're going to show downward trends on our other revenue streams in a, in a growth environment where we know we're adding rooftops at a rate of 300 houses per year, it causes me to take pause and ask, why are we showing a downward trend in projections specifically when the law that we're talking about, which, which was the only thing mentioned towards franchise fees in the email response, only affects 170,000 of the 1.8 million dollars projected in, in franchise fees earnings? So I'm just, I'm curious why we're wanting to take that down and put pressure on our property taxes?
Again, the estimates are based on an average year. It's not based on a really hot year or a really cold year. It's based on the franchise fees that we think we'll collect in an average year.
So those franchise fees that we're projecting is 1.5 million, and there's not one 1.5 million average anywhere in this spreadsheet. So how did we come up with 1.5 million as an average?
We, we base an average for electric is 900,000. An average bill, or an average collection for gas is 250. Those are the two big ones.
Okay. And what generates the 1.5 million as an average?
It includes, it includes miscellaneous other franchise fees. We get lots of small ones. As I mentioned, the electric and gas are the big ones. It also includes cable and it includes the garbage franchise fees.
So if we took the past five years of data and averaged them, how are we coming up with 1.5 million? That's lower than the average of all five years.
We're using an average of three to five years.
Okay, so even if it's the last three years, that's significantly lower than the average of the last three years?
The last, yeah, you're looking at actual. You're looking at the actual, that will fluctuate.
And that's really what I'm hoping we're basing our projections on is what we're actually collecting.
We are, on an average year, on an average year. The last three to five are, you know, you'll see ups and downs, they're not average.
But if you.
And I'm not prepared at this, at this meeting to tell you every single number, but I can certainly get those to you.
Okay. Patrick, in part of your question, can we raise those rates in that part of year?
Well, it's, it's actually, if, if we were to, if we were to raise the projection back to last year's forecast, which we know we're going to over-collect this year on, we were at 1.6 million, we're collecting 1.7 million this year. So if we just simply adjusted it back to last year's projection, that adds $60,000 back to the budget and relieves $60,000 from what we're putting on the property tax. So every time we show a downward trend in any other revenue stream, it puts pressure on our property tax revenues. So I'm just saying, hey, just go back to last year's projection with, and if, if we hit it, we hit it. It's a guess.
We know we're not going to get last year's if it's an average year because of this change in the legislature.
Okay. Again, that change in the legislature only impacts $170,000 of the revenue stream. If you cut it in half, I mean, just cutting it in half, that's not enough money to offset the $100,000 we gained this year. It's not enough. What I'm saying is half of, of 170,000, which let's just say it's the worst case that the law impacts that revenue stream, we're going to over-collect $100,000 on our last year's projection.
We don't know that. We don't know that that's going to happen.
Okay, but 1.78, one, the 1,718,400 that we're projecting to collect at year-end this year, okay? Is this an average year? It has been an average year. It's been a wet summer. I mean, we've had a few hot days, but this is an average year and we're collecting 1.7 million at the end of the year. And the only thing that the law impacts is $170,000 worth of the revenue stream. So cut that in half, that's 800, that's $85,000 versus the $100,000 over-collection. It sure seems to me that if we apply this as an average year, then last year's projection would make sense. That's, that's really all I'm saying.
So just a, a general comment, again, our, our revenue estimates are based on conservative estimates. The most known revenue source is property tax because we know, based on a collection ra, ratio, we know our rate, we can predict with fair amount of certainty. When we're over or under those amounts, for example, sales tax, sales tax is very volatile. If we're higher than projected for sales tax, that amount of money is available for one-time expenditures. Since we didn't plan for it, we wouldn't take that amount over-anticipated and make ongoing decisions. Every other revenue source in this city is the same way. Building permit fees is a good example. We've got a lot of residential construction right now. We will for another couple of years as subdivisions finish. That building program revenue is not going to be here forever, so we can't make long-term decisions based on that.
Well, historically, we've always underestimated our property tax collections. And this year, this year, last year, we, we ratified, the FY19 ratified property tax collection was 8,697. That was the ratified amount. What we reported in our truth and taxation worksheet is a collection of 8.9 million, $231,000 difference. So $231,000 over-collected. So we, we've underestimated what we were going to collect in property taxes. We've over-collected 231,000 and we're applying that 231,000 to ongoing expenses because it's baked into your rate right now.
We estimated the exact amount of property taxes with the information that we had at the time that we set the tax rate.
Which we ratified.
Set the tax rate based on information that we get from Tarrant Appraisal District.
Right.
At the time that we get our certified values, there's still cases under dispute. And so the way Tarrant Appraisal District gives us a certified value is of those accounts that are under dispute, they say worst-case scenario, you will probably collect at least 70% of that value. In actuality, even though they estimate 30%, we usually lose about 12%. But we have to use the information that we get from TAD. In most years, we do collect more than what we think we're going to collect because we don't lose 30% of the value. I did an analysis, I think it was last year or the year before, almost always, we collect more than the 30%. I think in the last seven years, there was one year that we actually collected less. So we must have lost a big case in that year and we did not, we lost more than the 12, the 30%. So it is possible that it will go the other way, but the majority of the time, it won't. And that is nothing that is based on an estimate that we do. It is all information that we get from TAD and we are required by law to use those numbers.
So again, when we ratify this budget in September, we're telling the taxpayers, this is the revenue amount that we are agreeing to take on and add to our budget. At the end of next year, the expectation that I would have as a taxpayer is that we don't increase that amount. We keep it at the amount we said. This is what we said we were going to take from you. And what we're doing is we're over-collecting and then we're applying that over-collection into our rate for the following year. Yes. So functionally, I'm, I'm happy to do the math. If we, if we want to go into that detail, I'm happy to do the math.
So, so we don't need to, but it's very simple. The truth and taxation calculation takes in a number of factors and it's, albeit tedious, it's, it's fairly simple. You can't consistently under-collect in the truth and taxation calculation because the truth and taxation calculation requires you to reflect what's actually been collected. Again, to Kim's point, we can only make decisions unknowns.
Okay.
Which is the 95% of assessed value in the certified roll. What also helps us this year, you'll see reflected on the page, we've had some pretty substantial sales tax growth, which is great. A half cent of our sales tax is dedicated to come to the general fund to reduce property tax rates, which I think off the top of my head is, do you remember the cents? Is it 0.8 cents? Because of.
Well, I appreciate the shift to sales tax. I'm not, I'm not there.
Right.
We're talking about, we're talking about property tax.
Yeah, we are talking about.
But let's, let's address.
And your assertions are not correct, right? So you're saying we're, we're consistently, I'll finish. You're saying we're consistently.
You have interrupted me.
Okay.
Give me a moment.
Okay, thank you.
We ratified 8,697,430 last year. We collected 8,929,216. That is $231,000 of over-collection. Tell me where that money is.
That money, since it wasn't budgeted for ongoing expenditures, would either go to the fund balance or be available for one time. would either go to the fund balance or be available for one-time purchases, one-time projects of the city. It's not like it's not available. In the truth and taxation, what I'm trying to say is, your truth and taxation calculation year to year always recognizes that you're not going to be perfect, right? In what you collect. And what you collect is reflected in that calculation. Again, I'm not saying it's perfect because it's not. We will consistently, just like every other city, have to make decisions on our certified roll, the 95% of value. Most years in the past, we've happened to collect more. If we make ongoing decisions and that 200,000 were the other way, we would be dipping into fund balance for ongoing expenditures if they were added, which is not sustainable. You don't take one-time money and present long-term increases. I mean, I understand your frustration. But we do what every city does and the best we can.
So Gabe, you've answered where the money went this year. What you haven't answered is that that is already baked in to our rate this year. So what we've over-collected is now baked in to our rate this year. So it's an instantaneous $230,000 raise that is baked into our base rate. So if we're reporting what we've actually collected versus what we ratified, we've already given ourselves a $231,000 raise just by adopting the lowest rate we can possibly adopt. Okay? So all I'm saying is that we can't ignore that piece when we're having these discussions. So we need to know that if we're going to raise our tax rate, we have to make sure that we're communicating amongst ourselves that we're starting out at a higher number to begin with in revenue. We just have to communicate that transparently and openly amongst ourselves.
And absolutely, anybody would recognize that a growing city is going to have more ongoing expenditures. I just want to note that we're not raising the tax rate. We're lowering the tax rate, right? Even from its current level. Albeit, if the council chooses to go to the rollback rate, it would just be slightly under quarter cent or so. The growth is because of values, as you're aware. Now, what I'd be interested in hearing, it's my understanding, the desire, the majority of the council is to proceed differently. We can adopt any budget you tell us to adopt and implement it. If we were to go with a lower tax rate, the 43 cents, tell us, you know, 800-some thousand in ongoing expenses you want removed. That would be my request to you. And it's not an easy one. So every penny, as presented before, is 212,000 of ongoing revenue. I'd be interested to hear your priorities to reduce that. It sounds like the majority of the council is interested in a different rate. But it's all fun and games until you get down to what we're funding and what we're not funding. The reality is, if we don't, in many areas, add to staff, public safety will always draw the most attention. As a growing community, if we don't add an officer on patrol or staff in the fire department, we're presenting a lower level of service. And I haven't heard anything from the council that has said we want to reduce the level of service. So the more people we have to serve, the more our existing employees are stretched.
All right, so the $800,000 that we're talking about in increased revenue, which would be generated with the rollback rate, okay? The way that that is satisfied with a $400,000 increase this year is we take on 400,000 in new revenue from property tax. We adjust our revenue projections, like the franchise tax, to last year. That gains another $60,000. On our fee schedule this year, which by the way, our fee schedule also includes recreation and other things. This is not just traffic tickets. It's not just municipal court. It is the entire fee schedule. But we adjust the entire fee schedule citywide to make up $165,000 worth of growth. We have not adjusted that fee schedule significantly in 10 years. And we've experienced a bunch of growth. That takes pressure off of the taxpayer, the property taxpayer. It gives $165,000 worth of revenue into the stream. You add that $60,000 for franchise. Now we're starting to get pretty close. We're now in the $600,000 range, okay? Now, now we've got to start talking about cutting areas in terms of cost. Right now, we're sitting on an economic development budget of almost $300,000. I believe operations and maintenance of that department shouldn't exceed 150,000. I've proposed that we make it a $200,000 budget, considering that we still owe Applebee's for the next three years, $50,000 a year. We still owe them 150,000 bucks because of an incentive deal we cut seven years ago. So cap that at 200,000 a year. We pick up the 150 for operations for economic development. And all of a sudden, we're at 800,000. That makes up the gap.
It might make up the gap this year. But again, let's say we charge the cost of service, whatever that is. I believe in recreation, we made some changes last year to the aquatic center. And did we change some rental fees?
We changed, yes, we did. We made changes to the aquatic center rental fees and also recreation center too.
Yeah. Some of these things, especially the recreational type things, we don't charge the cost of service. Animal services is a great example. We don't charge the full cost of service for adoptions, mostly because we want to promote adoptions. If they're $100 or $75, I'm making this up, whatever our cost is to spay, neuter, and that sort of thing. At some level, that would deter people. So I want to acknowledge your point. Yes, we could change our fees. Our building permit fees, because state law has changed, we have to reexamine.
Understood.
It'll be based on our cost and also our, kind of what's appropriate for our region. But I don't think, and I wish it were differently, substantially fees are going to change the long-term, ongoing revenue situation. The one thing we really can control, unfortunately, is the property tax rate. So, you know, if it's the desire of the majority to have a lesser rate, then I would say, let's talk about what we don't include.
I got a question. I just want to make sure I understand some things. A lot of what we're talking about here is how we make our estimates for our budget. And we've tended in the past to be very conservative. And I think that's what Kim mentioned for franchise fees. We're conservative. And the question is, how comfortable do we feel adjusting those assumptions? Can we hit them? I think, it sounds like, you know, Kim's concern, and it's very valid, is that, you know, if I make this assumption to whatever the larger number is, whatever that number is, and we don't hit it, then it looks like, well, we made a poor assumption. And we might hit it. We don't know. That's, a lot of these budget things are assumptions and we're guessing. We sometimes are right, sometimes are wrong. As far as the over-collection of taxes, it's not over-collecting. I mean, it's collecting the taxes, oh, but it's over-collecting in our estimate because we don't know exactly what the estimate is. And we've been conservative in the past. And I think that's been our MO for, as long as I've been on the council, be a little conservative. If we want to be a little more, I'll say aggressive is probably not the right word, flexible, we could adjust that a little. But then we're taking a little risk. How much it is, I don't know. Because we might not collect that. We might, we might not. And, you know, in the past several years, we've been, we've over-collected by whatever the number is. That may continue, it may not. It's hard to say. And I think, I know Kim and her budget is, tends to be much more conservative. She wants a budget that she can definitely stand behind.
No doubt.
That may lean toward maybe too conservative. I don't know. That's, I mean, the council, it's really up to us to say, you know, how conservative do we want to be? Do we want to say, you know, yes? You know, we always talk about, you know, percent confidence, 95% confidence in this, 100% confidence. I'd like a budget I have a lot of confidence in. If it's a little more or a little less conservative, we wouldn't have as much confidence. It'd still be pretty confident. So that's really like what we're discussing here or what we're debating, is how much we want to adjust that, those assumptions. Because, you know, budgeting is not an exact science. It's still, there's unknowns. And how we deal with unknowns and how much risk the council is wanting to swallow. That's a lot of what we're discussing. So I want council to think about that when we're going through all these discussions. And I'm sorry to interrupt, but I wanted to ask those questions and also just put in my two cents on just the baseline for a lot of it. The concern is the baseline. What are we starting with, what our assumptions are, so. And Kim, did I speak correctly? I don't want to speak for you and speak incorrectly.
I think that's an excellent way to summarize the debate. You're right. It's based on how much risk do you want to take?
And Mr. Mayor, I 100% agree with that. I think that Kim and her ability to see into the future is probably better than any finance professional I've seen. And I would put 100% confidence in what her projections are. It's just a matter of, last year, we raised our revenue by over 800,000. This year, we're talking about doing it again. Two years in a row, that's 1.6 million dollars were taken from the pockets of our property taxpayers. We really have got to think about, what risks should we be taking, knowing that we've got a pocket full of their money already in fund balance? If we err on the side of caution, great. If we take a little bit of risk, you know what? We've got some money in fund balance if we have to, to cover the nut. My concern is, is what we're communicating to our taxpayers is, hey, if we've got the opportunity to hit you with a rollback rate, we're just going to take it. And that is just not looking good. Especially when we do it two years in a row. And that's really, and to your point, on the revenue side of things, this is really a projection. It's really a looking into the crystal ball question. But on the expense side, there are opportunities, even in revenue, where we can generate additional revenue that's not such crystal ball. It's less predictable than property taxes because it's tied to how many people are going to show up to the pool this year. How many people are going to adopt pets? It's kind of tied to a little more calculus than what we see with the property tax revenue. So there's a little more risk in banking on an adjustment in our fee schedule. But on the expense side, I don't think we're taking any risk at all in reducing a couple of what I would consider to be beneficial, but not what I would consider core service, like police department and fire department. If we look at those departments, adjust those budgets downward just a little bit, and see how they perform, and look to the taxpayer and say, you know what? We did this to you last year, but we're not going to do it to you this year. And these are the things that we're doing. I want you to know, taxpayer, we're doing these things. We're taking on a little bit of risk. We're pinching in areas where it hurts a little bit to pinch, but we're pinching. And we're doing this for you. That's really where I'm coming from.
And the question of fees that I just, you know, we talk about fees and whatever fees they are, franchise fees or aquatics and other fees. You know, we call them fees, but aren't they sort of a tax as well? I mean, they're another word for a tax. We're paying, they're paying for use as opposed to overall. But it's sort of another word for tax. It's still fees. We're a tax collecting agency, so we're collecting them almost like a tax. But I want to hear what the rest of the council thinks on this. How much risk is the rest of the council comfortable with? And, oh, Mary?
I'm not for taking risk. I like the way the city is conservative in their estimates, et cetera. Also, you touched on it. If we raise the fee schedule, what is the difference in, you know, we're asking the citizens to pay more for something? An average homeowner, an average property owner, if we do the rollback rate, will be paying slightly less than $6 a month more than the average property owner pays now. If you raise the fees, some or all of those same people might be paying more than $6 a month in raised fees. So I don't see that that's a good place to raise revenue. And I am also against reducing the economic development budget at all.
On the fee part, that's kind of like a choice for them to make. Which I understand that rollback rate, I mean, the tax rate is not their choice. That's our choice. But I feel like that the fees are not near what they should be. Not so much the residents, but the people that don't live here. Because there's such a slight little difference. And they tear up our stuff. And I see it all the time at the Lock Haven. They dance on the tables, they tear up things, they tear the cameras down. I see it. And they're not our citizens. They're from another place. And they come here because we're cheap in our fees. And I feel like, I don't think that the, I think the fees would be a good place to increase. It's not going to hurt the citizen. And it's, once again, it's the citizen's choice. And they'll still go to it if that's what they want to do. And so, yeah.
I'm still trying to figure everything out, but...
Drinking through a water hose, a fire hose.
Yeah, so is the rollback rate lower than the current rate? Or? I mean, I agree. I know some of our fees are pretty low. I mean, I have people saying, hey, can you go rent this for me? Because it's so cheap and it's like, you know. You know, so I know, I think we can look at that. I'm not sure about as far as all the different fees and things like that. But certain fees, I think we can look at raising. And I'm on board, I mean, I'm on board with the emergency management and adding the additional police officers and firefighters and their equipment. So, but I also am listening to hear what, how Patrick is saying, the way he's presenting everything, it also makes sense too. So I'm just trying to absorb everything and make my own decision. But I'm leaning more towards the rollback rate as well, though.
Thank you, Charlie. While I'm thinking about this and looking at this, I've got a question. So we're talking about adding a police officer. Currently, we are four positions under that are budgeted positions that we don't have filled. Is that correct?
We currently have three open positions. We're about to hire one probably next week and another one about a month after that, which would leave us one more. And we have applications in process for that position now as well.
Okay. And my question is about that, you know, we need to get the full staff of what we currently are. You know, if we add this position or if we don't add this position, it wouldn't be added until a certain time point in the future anyhow. Because we're still understaffed currently to bring those folks up to speed and things. So I guess my thought on the police officers, do we need it this budget year? Could we just, you know, put us that off and say, hey, let's hire what we have, what we have already budgeted? Let's get the full staff there and see where we are in a year, in mid-year even. We can look at it that way. That's sort of my thought on the police officer, and I just wanted to ask that to the chief.
Mayor, you know, we got this beautifully organized workbook for the workshop today. And I don't know who did it, but you did a great job. Thank you so much. But I went in and I looked at the budget proposals for each department. And considering we should be about 83% of your expenditures at this time of year, I noticed that, you know, I mean, fire, I take my hat off to you. You're right, right exactly where you're supposed to be in your expenditures. But I noticed that parks and economic development and fleet management are right about 50% of spending their budget. And that kind of gives me the impression that maybe they overestimated what their budgets were supposed to be for this year. And if, and I think they're all a little bit higher for next year. So I think we ought to take a look at those and see, you know, there are some cuts that we can make to those departments and save some money. Because, you know, 50% when we're three-quarters of the way through the year is a pretty significant amount of money.
Can I just make one comment about that?
Yes, ma'am.
The sheets that I sent out via email Wednesday or Thursday was through July, so that would be 83%. But at the time the binder was made, it was just expenditures through June. So it would be about 75% is where your actual should be. And also, keep in mind that not every department spends on a straight line. For example, parks, they've got mowing that's only in the spring and the summer, which is a large part of their budget. So it's not going to be a straight-line expense. There are departments that fluctuate. The same with the rec center. The beginning of the year, you don't have all of those seasonal positions that you have towards the end of the year. So you're going to see the majority of the expenses later in the fiscal year. So you're not going to be necessarily straight-lined.
And I thank you for that, but I also took that into consideration. That's why I picked the low number, you know, around 50%. I noticed that the mowing services were all around 13% of their expenditures. And we had a lot of rain this year. Trust me, I mowed more this year than I've ever mowed. So that number kind of... So that number kind of surprised me.
We also run one to two months depending on the contractor. They don't get us, you know, they don't get us their July, their June invoice, the first of July. So it could be as much as two months lag between when the service actually happens and when the service is paid for. So just keep that in mind.
So, council member, what I would add is maybe the better analysis would be to look at the actuals from the previous year. Now, it gets a little fuzzy because, as you know, we amend the budget usually mid-year because there's some amount of additions. But the departments will tell you they're pretty good about, you know, living within their means and spending what they have. And again, to Kim's point, it's not a linear spend. So some things are very, very seasonal. Sometimes one-time expenditures may happen either October 1 or, you know, in September, the last part of the year.
And I was aware of that, insurances and payments that had to be made and things like that. But I mean, I'm just saying it's still something that we need to look at. The department is not able to spend their full budget. For example, code enforcement had the $60,000 grant, and it looks like that was never even used. That was in the budget, and it doesn't carry over to this year.
That was a one-time match for a possible green ribbon grant? Is that what it was?
I believe it was a home grant through Tarrant County, yeah.
Yeah, if you recall, that was for the home grant. So through Tarrant County, we're able to match homeowners for home repairs, but it's dependent on not us. So applicants within the city have to apply through the county, and then we match.
Mayor's got to go, so let's let Mary have a last word here for a minute.
I know this is not what we're discussing right now, but I have an unavoidable reason where I have to leave in three minutes. So I just wanted to ask, is this the meeting where we would discuss the possibility of making the donations to the three entities that I had suggested? Or would we discuss that at another meeting, or today?
I'd certainly like to hear it now. I mean...
And I don't have time, but everybody knows.
Sure. And that would be one-time money, so really, any amount the council would like.
So I wanted to make sure we made a decision or a somewhat, not a vote, but a feeling of what we would like to do in that area.
Will you remind us the ones you talked about?
Community Link, Meals on Wheels of Tarrant County, and the possible donation to the Eagle Mountain-Saginaw Independent School District Scholarship Fund. And these could all come out of the general fund. They would not have to be added to the budget. They would be small amounts of money that we could absorb easily from the general fund, correct?
That's correct, yeah. It'd just be one-time money that would be fund balance, so.
And that would be small. I mean, as large as the city council would like. I'm thinking like 2,000 to Saginaw School District, 1,000 to Community Link, and 1,000 to Meals on Wheels. That's like very minimal. If the council would like to donate more, that's fine too. But I just think it would be a great idea. And with that, I'm sorry to say I have to leave.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. Cindy, were you, you want to continue?
Anyway, like I said, those were just some figures that I was looking at. You know, I noticed animal services, data services were up 330%, you know, so why was that?
Because they're up to full staff. We had some staff vacancy last year. I believe they carry cell phones for use out in the field. These are all kind of cost of business type things. But a good point.
Right. So I mean, you know, those are some of the things that I like to look at. Also, on the community services, they have dues and subscriptions. I noticed they have a line item in there for the Chamber of Commerce luncheons. Obviously, that's not an expense we're going to incur this year. So I'm curious how much that is, and we probably need to strike that out of the budget as well.
Sure. I think, Keith, do you know off the top of your head what that is?
There, it's very minimal. It's probably about $100 max. There are a few things when this budget was put together, when the Chamber of Commerce was still active. Since the dissolving of the Chamber, there's been some things that, some changes like that.
You know, and I'll put Keith on the spot. He was really living a life that we all dream of, our past councilman. He was on vacation. And then last week, he went to Red River, and I don't think there's any fish left in that body of water from the pictures I've seen. But, so some of the increases in community services this year are because we, if you all recall, our facilities are seeing a lot more use. But we've also picked up with the Chamber's status, a couple of events that we're going to continue to participate in. So we'll continue to have costs related to that. Taste Northwest, we're committed to, and of course, Run the Rails, which has really been a city-driven event due to Keith's leadership for some time.
That is correct.
Keith, let me clarify. You're officially taking it over?
Yes. That is correct.
Okay. I appreciate you running it for as long as you've run it. Thank you.
And then my last comment is, I agree with the council member Tankersley. I believe that our usage fees, facility usage fees, library fees, and I know I've mentioned this to Ellen before, especially for non-residents, I think they should be increased. Every place that you go for your ESL classes or your citizenship classes, you have to pay for. And our library graciously absorbs those prices, and our citizens are having to pay for those. And I mean, they're $25 anyplace else that you go for these courses. And I don't have a problem with asking non-residents to pay that $25. So I think those are some other income sources that we should seriously consider. And I know it may not be much on an individual basis, but when you start adding up all these separate little entities, it can make a significant difference. Thank you.
Yes, I'll get in the limelight here. I agree with council member Big Horse about the fees, usage fees. And I think we need to use caution and not get greedy. And we need to be able to raise the fees up to what a normal fee would be. But let's not try to gouge them. The next thing is, I don't know that I am willing to go to the citizens of Saginaw and say, look, we're going to cut the taxes here, and we're going to do this, and we're going to save you money. But oh, yeah, it's going to cost you a firefighter or two, or a policeman or two, and it's going to cost you. And if it's not good, then we won't do that next year. I don't know that I'm willing to tell them that.
So Charlie, has that been proposed? No, no, we can staff every position. We staff every position. We're increasing our, we're increasing the revenue by $420,000. We have to make up the other $400,000 in a combination of revenue projections, an increase in fee schedule, and cut in department costs, which all of us have been discussing. It has not been discussed that we would be losing people that have been proposed in terms of firefighters and policemen. That has not been proposed. I'm sorry if I, I'm sorry if it was confusing, but that's not what I'm proposing at all.
Mr. Mayor, if that's the will of the council, my recommendation would be we look at what we don't add instead of take a less conservative basis to our budget. I think it's far more practical to be conservative, as has been the past practice. If it's a desire, let's talk about what needs to come out. Ongoing additions.
We've talked fees several times. What do you think we can, what additional revenue you think we can raise from fees if we seriously look at that?
So, and to council member Tucker's point, some of the fee-based services we offer don't recover their full cost. For example, I can take my kids, and I do as a resident, to the Aquatic Center for $5 a child. If we raise that to 20, are we going to raise, and this is a big number, right, just to illustrate, are we going to raise more money? Probably. We're also going to cut substantially more users out from using that service. Our adoption fee's about $20. If we raise adoption fees to 50 or 75, or maybe a higher cost, would we bring in some more revenue? We may, but we're also going to have less activity. I am happy, and I've heard loud and clear the facility rentals. We need to examine that, especially our out-of-city, you know, non-resident fees, which we can do. Grand scheme of things, I don't know if you have a ballpark estimate. I think we're probably talking tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands in those type fees. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, it's not going to, I mean, adding, increasing those types of fees, we'll have to get information from the department heads as far as what they estimate. You know, you'll have to factor in the loss as well as the increase. But it's not going to, it's not going to make up 200, $400,000.
Well, that component in the proposal that I gave the council and staff only has to make up $160,000 across the entire fee schedule. And the fee schedule's made up of maybe a couple hundred fees. You're talking franchise fees as well, right? No, no, that's a projection. So I'm talking about the fee schedule itself. If we look at the book of fee schedule that we have in our city, it is a, it's a book. There's a lot of fees that we charge. And all we're having to do is adjust across the board all fees to generate no more than $160,000 worth of additional revenue. And that fits the model that I proposed.
I'm hearing you, and I want to tell you, you have good staff here that have been in place far before me. And I don't want to discount what you're saying, but if that, if it was that easy, I commit to you, it already would have been done.
I just want to, I want to see the proof. I want to see, I want to see the proof in the fee schedule, what we can, if it's possible to generate, $160,000 worth of additional revenue by adjusting the entire fee schedule.
Sure.
Not just picking the pool. I'm talking about the entire fee schedule.
Sure.
Making adjustments to generate that additional revenue.
And, you know, on a per unit, probably the most fees we have are building permits of various types. But again, that's kind of a, that's not a forever thing. It's based on a certain amount of activity. But happy to look at it. The facility fees, we can look at. Again, structurally, we're not going to close, in my estimation, a big gap, but we'll look back.
Just looking for $160,000.
Okay, so staff has that action item to go look at that and see what we can do with fees. See how much we can get out of, wring out of fees.
We, just a reminder as well, with changes in state law related to building permit structure, so our city currently, and most cities base a lot of permits based on value, construction value. The state legislature has outlawed that basis, so many cities are moving towards a square footage estimate. So this is timely because our building permit structure has to change. The legislature's made it that way. I believe that staff is working in public works to bring something forward in the next few months to, so that we're covered. Fair statement.
Yes, actually, we'll have, excuse me, have something in the next two council meetings, a fee schedule for a building permit.
Think you can get us email the council out of a projection of what fees can, like a total number of what fees we can increase, increase fees? How quickly we think we can do that?
Sure, sure, yeah. I mean, we can get, you know, outside of building permits, we're kind of fixed costs with citations, court-type fees. But yeah, we'd be looking at facilities, kind of recreational type things, so.
So on page 22 of the budget, it breaks down those four categories. Municipal court fines and fees, we're projecting to generate $340,000 based on the current fee schedule. We're projecting in recreation fees alone, half a million, $500,000. That is the lion's share of the fee schedule.
Which is based, that's the Aquatic Center in large part.
So then we get $55,000 in permits and fees. That is second only to the library in its significance. It is an insignificant amount in terms of the 1.6 million we're talking about, $55,000. So it looks like municipal court fines and fees, that's probably not an area that we're going to milk much out of. But it certainly looks like there's an opportunity in recreation fees. And to the mayor's point, all I want to see is how much we can wring out of it and still stay competitive with our neighboring cities. If we're talking court fees, is there, I'm assuming that there's certain laws for what fees we can charge for court fees and those kind of things? How does that work?
That's right. The majority of what we collect goes to the state, and the portion that the city can retain is, we have a range that's dictated to us by the state. The major, the largest amount of tickets that are written are speeding tickets, and those are capped at a certain amount. So saying we're going to increase all of our fees by 10% is not going to generate us 10% more in revenues. We'll have to take a close look at that. It's been about four or five years since we looked at that, and we can ask the judge to do that and see if there are other. The last time we looked at it, we adjusted so that we stayed comparable with surrounding cities. And we can certainly look at that again, but it's going to take more than just a month to do that. But we could make that a goal this year, is to have her look at our citation rate to see where we're at.
I guess I didn't appreciate how much Joe contributed to the city before he retired, so I was unaware.
That was two police staff positions that we lost with...
And, excuse me, Mayor, and again, I'd like to, you know, just reiterate the point that I think we ought to look at a more significant increase for the non-residents. To use the library, is it $15, I think, is what I read? All right. But, you know, and looking over the, that same revenue chart on page 22, I mean, you can see, there seems to be, you know, it either holds steady or it's decreasing. And again, you know, I don't, I don't want to put, be a big burden to our citizens, but we have a lot of people that come into our community that are not citizens that like our facilities. One, I mean, they're well-maintained. Two, they're inexpensive, and we do have to do a lot of cleanup behinds anybody that uses our facilities. And I just think that we need to recover some of those costs.
All right, so that covers the fee question in far as revenue. The other question was, that we talked a little about, was budget assumptions. How much risk is the council willing to swallow in our current budget assumptions? And I mean, staff as well, but council, it's ultimately our decision. How much risk are we willing to take on that we may or may not hit the assumptions revenue-wise? Before I go into that, do we need a break? I just thought of it.
It would be great.
Let's take a 10-minute break, all right?
Let's, let's take a ten-minute break, all right?
Thank you.
Everybody back?
Sir.
Back, let's get back, let's get back started. All right, so, now I'm in the sun. All right, so where we were, we talked, got through fees, we're at budget assumptions. So, the question really is how much risk is council willing to assume on assumptions for the budget? We talked about franchise fees, but it also goes into the other pieces or aspects of the budget as well. Uh, how much is council willing to risk or absorb? How much risk are we willing to absorb? And then staff can maybe tell us what really the risk might be and what their, their thoughts on it. So, let's start with council, and I'll start with you, ma'am. What do we think?
Well, I just finished talking a lot, so why don't we start on the other end?
Let's go to Mr. Tucker. All right. I, I don't wanna talk with Charles, just 'cause he's a, he's a new guy. Hate to put him on the.
Poor guy.
I know.
So, what was the question again?
Well, you know, we talked about assumptions, about budget assumptions specifically with the, the franchise fees. And then we also with the other assumptions, where we are. And we're, our budget assumptions and our budget are very conservative. No, I'm okay. And, and the question is, are we too conservative? Do we wanna be able to take a little more risk, which is what we mentioned earlier? And really, I wanna get the council's fe, feedback on that and what you think. And then I want staff to talk about the potential implications of what the, the risk might be and the, the outcomes there. So, that's really the question. You know, we talked about a, I think, a hundred thousand dollars' worth of risk in franchise fees and their other numbers as well. But just overall, you know, we've been very conservative budgeting in the past. That's been our, our standard. Do we wanna be a little less conservative? Really a question.
Being, this is my first budget. I like the way Kim and the city has put this, the staff has put this, um, budget proposal together. I'm able to follow it, I understand it. I, if this is conservative, I love it. So, I wanna go with this.
Okay. Patrick?
Yeah, it's, it, the only thing that I'm asking is related to the franchise fees, and I'm asking that we take fifty-eight thousand dollars of risk. Uh, and that's simply just adjusting our forecast back to our current forecast and not dipping it down to one point five million, knowing that we're collecting one point seven million. That's the only risk that I'm asking that we take, and I really don't see it as risk. It's fifty-eight thousand bucks, and it surely looks like we're going to over-collect on the one point five million next year, based on what I see this year's collections.
Valerie?
I would like to see the fees upgraded a little bit, especially for the non-residents. Um, I don't wanna lose any services, per se. I know that we need to lay some fire, if there are number one concern. Um, maybe we could look at some of the other departments that aren't using all their, their budgeted and see what we can do there, and maybe we can lower it a little bit.
Worth taking a look at.
What are your thoughts on, as we just mentioned, the assumptions specifically for franchise fees that we've, you know, our budget is a little conservative? What are your thoughts on that?
Uh, I think we have been a little conservative, but I think like Patrick said, it's like fifty-eight thousand or whatever, we've got that in our fund, right?
Yeah. If, if, if that's the risk, we can cover the risk at the end of the year.
So, we're not really, is that really a risk?
I agree with Patrick. Uh, if we've actually got fifty-eight grand sitting out there that, if nothing else, maybe it needs to be looked at.
And again, you know, kinda to reiterate what I said before, um, you know, I, I, I think our staff could go in and take a look at some of their expenditures. And, uh, one of the things I noticed, and I'm not trying to pick on economic development as much, but I know that their, uh, travel and training budget, seventeen thousand dollars. That, that's a, a lot of money. And I know that, that's also a lot of time away from home. Uh, so I think the, you know, especially if they're not, if the departments aren't spending all of their money, they can take a look at it. We always have a mid-year adjustment, and we're always adding more to our budget. I don't see that we're ever taking away on our mid-year adjustments. So, let's take a hard look at that. Um, and again, let's look at our fee schedules. And we don't have to increase those numbers for our citizens. They pay taxes, and they deserve these fees, and we deserve to keep it low for them. But we have people that come in from the outside, and yes, they bring money in. But I think we need to look at increasing those fees, something comparable to our neighbors. We don't have to match it, but it does need to be comparable. Um, question about the, the adoption services. Do outside res, or out, people outside of the city of Saginaw pay the same adoption fee as residents inside the city?
Yes, they do.
I don't have a.
What is that number? Twenty.
I don't mind doubling that for people coming in from the outside.
We also have, um, there are times when we're overwhelmed. Our shelter is small, and there are times when we're overwhelmed with animals, and we have ze, no room to add any additional animals. And we'll go through, um, like, for example, a month where we have free adoptions for cats because we're, we have zero room, or free adoptions for large dogs because they're harder to adopt. Uh, because it's, it's, it comes down to a choice of, we, our philosophy, and if, if our philosophy needs to change, it can, but our philosophy is to find homes for these animals and not to, um, reduce their lifespan, so to speak. Um, but that, that's one of the reasons why we do, we will go through a month occasionally with, where we're overwhelmed with large dogs, which are harder to adopt. We do have free adoptions, uh, to find homes for them as opposed to the, the alternative.
What about those wild pigs? Are those getting adopted, or are we, are we making money off of them?
I'd like to adopt them to my freezer.
Do you want one, Charlie?
Their lifespan, their lifespan is being reduced once they get captured.
Okay, but now you understand you can't have that in the city.
I just was asking a question, and then, uh, if we were making any money off of those.
All right, Cindy, go ahead.
And that was basically all I had. I mean, even if we look at, you know, um, ten dollars more for outside residents, you know, to adopt a pet, even when you have free adoptions, I mean, that five or ten dollars is really nothing, even compared to what, you know, other neighboring cities pay for their adoption fees.
They charge about, they charge about the same at twenty dollars. The other thing we also do in attempt to try and find homes for some animals, especially animals that have been there for a long time, is, is if you look at the, I don't have it in front of me right now, but if you look at the, um, an, animals transferred to rescue groups, that number's doubled or tripled because we're trying to find, again, we're trying to find homes as opposed to the alternative.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Well, let's, let's go, let's roll back around. We're talking about these budget assumptions, excuse me. So, staff, I guess, Kim, I'm looking at, if we do make this, this change, you know, what would be the, the implication of that? Uh, if we, if we change the franchise fee assumption, or I guess baseline would be the best way to put it, uh, what would be the ramifications, and what are your thoughts on that? Excuse me.
Well, I'll have to get the information from the department heads as far as, um, their projected increase and projected reduction in activity, if you will. So, if we increase our non-resident fees for membership at the rec center or at the pool, then we can assume that there'll be fewer out, non-residents coming to use our facilities. So, we'll have to factor that in. Um, I, I don't wanna off the top of my head tell you what that's gonna equate to. I'd like to have a day or two to look at the numbers. Um, if we, now knowing that we are not going to fund the full year of the emergency manager and adjust some fees, you know, you may be able to save a quarter of a cent or a half a cent on the tax rate.
About what we've talked about, about the, the franchise fee, that number assumption, that budget assumption, what, what are your thoughts on that? What would be the implication of that, that change if we did?
When we're talking about other people's money, I want to be conservative. I mean, that's just my philosophy. It's been my philosophy my whole career. I take my fiduciary responsibility, um, very seriously. I mean, I'm working for the taxpayers of Saginaw, and I'm not gonna take risks with their money. Um, I would say that, you know, there probably is some room that we can maybe adjust our assumptions and take a little bit more risk. The other thing I wanna keep, you would keep in mind, though, is as we're spending down fund balance for these things that are very necessary, um, there's less room, there's less wiggle room. I mean, there's less room to be off on your assumptions because where that's gonna, the difference is gonna come from fund balance. And as your fund balance is spent on one-time items, then, you know, when we look mid-year, it's gonna come from fund balance, or it's gonna come from not filling a vacant position or something like that. So, you just need to be ready for that.
You bring up a good point. So, this budget was built with the assumption that the emergency manager would be paid fully out of Saginaw, correct?
Uh, no, the, the changes were made that, um, the city of Lake Worth will pay half of it. But we just heard from Chief Spears that that won't hap, and, and the, but the assumption was that it would be on ten-one.
Oh, okay.
Um, but if we're looking at six months into the year, then, um, that's something that the nineteen-twenty budget would not have to absorb. But we'll have to keep in mind that we'll have to make up that difference in the twenty-twenty-one budget year, 'cause we'll have a full funding there.
Okay, thank you. Not, sorry, I did not state that well. Thank you for clarifying that, okay. All right, so, do you do a question?
I do. I know that we have a mowing contract with another company, and I know that we're committed to, uh, that cost. Um, but that's also based on the amount, how they mow, if I understand correctly. But how long is that contract?
It's a two-year contract, so it's renewed every two years. Or not renewed, but put out the bid.
Is there a reason why we don't hire part-time staff to do that for us?
Part of the deal is the capital expenditure to, to ramp up on your equipment. I mean, there, there's a lot of equipment involved, so you're better off farming that out. And then there's also the increased liability for, or for injuries. out, and then there's also the increased liability for, or, for injuries, et cetera, on the job. So it's just, you know, the decision was made years ago to contract that out as opposed to carry it in-house.
And could we get a comparison of what those actual costs differences are?
The cost difference between ramping up and, and using our own staff.
But the ramping up is only a one-time thing, right?
It is, but there's ongoing maintenance of that equipment, and then there's a replacement schedule as that equipment gets, you know, worn out, et cetera. So, so there's a life cycle cost there.
Okay.
Do we have some equipment now?
We do have equipment. I mean, in fact, part of our, one of our budget requests is a, a mowing apparatus for creeks, so we do some of that ourselves, but, but the, the bulk of the mowing, the parkways, the parks, et cetera, is done by contract.
Yeah, I think Keith said something.
I wanted to-
Do they contribute?
Add some, not to the mowing, but I wanted to add something. Whenever we're projecting our revenues, our, our, our department has, some of our revenues that come in are, are determined by things that we cannot control. I'll give you two examples. One of them is in 2008, when the recession, we had projected on an average year what we had been receiving, and people stopped showing up. It wasn't anything that we were doing different. People were just not spending money, and our revenues went down. The other thing that we look at, we, we, we project a very conservative revenue, very conservative revenue, and the reason is, at our aquatics center, for example, is some years we have, I'm about to knock on wood, when, just a second, but some years we have very rainy seasons, and we've had years where we have zero attendance for a day. That means zero money coming in. Some years, well, two things. One is when it rains, nobody shows up. Also, when it's about 99, 98 degrees or hotter, no one shows up, and that determines, and here I'm knocking on wood, so far, this is the first year in the 11, 12 years that we've been open, that we haven't had a zero attendance yet, or we haven't had to shut down for, whether it's mechanical, chemical, or certainly weather. But what, what are, the things that we do are determined by weather, which we can't control, and the, the financial stability, or whatever you want to call it, of our country at that time. So we, we project very, very conservatively. We could, we could easily say we would bring in an additional $50,000, but there are things that we can't control that might determine.
Mr., Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Gabe.
Just one point, talking with Chief Howell, we could potentially stagger or delay the, the hiring of the second police officer to mid-year or, you know, January 1 or something.
Mr. Mayor?
Correct. We would have to recognize, though, that the full year, you know, we'd be picking up the full year impact of that position in FY '21. So that may help a little bit in the short term, but something to consider.
I would, I would be happy with that, especially considering that we're, we're not fully staffed today, so we, we have some time, and so I'd be, that's a very good suggestion. What does the rest of council think about that? We good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Let's do it. Let's scratch that one.
So just to be clear, maybe a January 1, which would be 75% of the year, the fiscal year?
So it will come, it will come back to us, what you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah. Is that what the change?
Yeah.
Well, what he's asking is that it will come back to us at a mid-year adjustment, but you're, you're executing the hire in January, but not October 1st.
Correct. So we would reflect both revenues and expenditures, or expenditures to, to reflect that. Yeah, we would, we'd propose it in the budget, but-
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be gone, it would be reduced.
Uh, yeah, that number would be reduced this fiscal year, but we'd have to pick up the full cost.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, in the future.
Right. And, and let's think about, one of the reasons we're, and we should be very cautious about adding, adding positions, adding headcount, is because that's ongoing expenses. That's not a one-time deal. That, that's the gift that keeps on giving. And we need staff, understand that, but we're going to be, as a council, very, just judicious about adding staff. That's because you don't get rid of that staff. I, I don't want to ever have to do layoffs. Correct me if I'm wrong, we did not do any layoffs during the '08, did we? And that's because we had been very conservative up to that date. We cut other projects, we cut some dollars elsewhere, but we did not lay anybody off. I would like to continue that. That's why, well, I'm happy not to add staff at certain places, just so we don't have to go through that, so. And I think it's a good message to send to our staff, our folks, hey, we're going to do everything we can not to lay people off. We may grow a little slower than we, we could for that, and that's fine. But that's been our philosophy, and I'd like to keep that going forward.
But just, I do want to be mindful about state law change in property tax revenue next year. We need to be very careful about the number of staff that we're staggering because we will not be able to pay for them next year. So we just, just, if, if it's the emergency manager, and we're cutting that back this fiscal year, if it's one police officer, then, you know, I see that being one position in whole that we're having to fund in the next fiscal year, but we can't do very many of those, knowing that we're, we are going to be faced with a significant cut in our revenue from state law.
So Mayor, to your point, going forward with the new rules, the three and a half percent increase, our priority will always be to maintain existing service levels and do what we can for our current employees. This year was, was not normal, with insurance increases being 22%, although on an average, we're about 10% increases in healthcare. Our health insurance advisors have told us that we're going to have to look at plan changes in the future, which we'll, we'll do, but it's a good point. And, you know, going forward with the three and a half percent, I think Lewis will come back to present to the council, I think, our next meeting. Most cities are going to be able to take care of their, their current costs and current service levels with that three and a half percent, absent any big increases. So, you know, priority one will continue to be, take care of raises, cost of living adjustments, health insurance for existing employees, positions, and new things will be at a premium. So this year would be very important if there was a desire to add more staff, because it's going to get tighter.
All right, so we've got a couple of requests going into staff to look at some of these numbers and see how they can impact our budget, hopefully for the positive. Let's talk about how we want to move forward with that. So the fees, the fees question, we can get some information here in the short term about some, but not all the fees. That can be emailed out to us in the, in the near future. But then the, the other budget pieces, we need to give staff some direction. Though I guess we do have a couple of options here. Let me, if I state this correctly, we can, we have to start posting. We can post at the rollback, essentially the rollback rate, but then our actual tax that we ratify can be lower than that. We can't go higher, but we can go lower than what we post, correct? Okay. So we do have that option. We can post, say, at the, at the, at the rollback rate today, and come back with a lower rate once we get all this lined out. Is that something the council would be comfortable with?
Absolutely.
Okay. Sir? Yes, sir? Valerie?
Yes.
Okay. Patrick?
I can't support the rollback rate even in the, in an interim.
Charles?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Is that clear? Is that good enough? Okay. What other, and I don't want to move, I don't want to move off this subject until we have thoroughly vetted this. What other issues do we need to discuss and questions do we have on this issue?
So on the expenditure forecasts, there were a couple of things that I had presented. We've already addressed one of them in terms of economic development and its budget adjustment. One thing I want to touch, touch back on is the fleet maintenance adjustment. I, just in looking at the trend of expenditures in fleet maintenance-
Hold on, what page are you on?
I'm, I'm sorry. This is the, this is the revised top sheet that was sent out on Wednesday, maybe? Wednesday or Thursday? So it would be, it would replace page 21 in your binder?
Yeah.
Is everybody with me?
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is fifth from the bottom, fleet maintenance, and, and as we're tracking across fleet maintenance, that number fluctuates, and I understand year to year, because you don't know if you're going to have to replace an engine in something, you know, you have no idea really what's going to occur. So there's, there is some moderate risk in what I've proposed, and that's to pick up another $72,000 in this line item, and that is to essentially take our actual FY '18 exposure, what we actually paid in FY '18, add 10% to that, and establish that as our FY '20 budget for fleet maintenance. And if we do that, it essentially relieves us of $72,000 worth of forecast cost. Now, going back to what we talked about in franchise fees, this is, this is a guess, and I understand that it's a guess, but I want to make sure that this is a forecast on the expenditure side, not the revenue side, that I've asked for us to look at.
Okay. So that's a good point, and, and one of the variables that is very hard to predict is fuel cost and cost of, like, oil, very, you know, market-driven. That's why you see, you know, generally, changes. We're going to continue with routine preventive maintenance. We have really good in-house fleet staff, but that's some of it. So you tell me what OPEC's going to do, or-
No, no, I, I agree.
-some commodity forecasts. That's why you're seeing the-
And, and if you go to page 108 of your budget book, you'll see exactly what Gabe is talking about. The, the biggest fluctuation number is in the fuel cost.
Fuel, right, yeah.
But you'll also see that in previous years, those have been overestimated. That's not going to say, that's not to say that OPEC doesn't change the price of oil this year, and all of a sudden, we're at a loss. But I, I just wanted to point that out, that that is not a revenue projection that I want us to look at, it is a expense projection that I want us to look at.
What do you think, staff? What do you think, what kind of risk are we taking on here? I mean, is it a big risk, little risk, medium risk? What do you think about cutting 70,000 or 75,000? And if we need time to think about this, I'm okay with that, but let's, let's, let's at least think about what that would entail and what kind of risks, you know, we, 95% confident, 100% confident, what are, what are we at?
We, we can look at fuel. Fuel, you know, is, is probably based on a higher amount. Out, as far as outside contract labor, we happen to have very good people right now and can do a lot of things in-house, but it only takes one or two major things that we have to contract out, and you're going to get that expenditure for, for outside repairs.
And how often would that happen?
I mean, if a fire truck goes down-
You're asking the wrong person.
A fire truck goes down, and we're, we're, it shot, the budget shot, yeah.
Yeah, if you lose a pump in one of your fire trucks, I think that would be a very interesting year.
We have had expenditures, particularly with the motor, that extend beyond 30,000 for the repairs.
Yeah, yeah.
That could happen.
But you've got new trucks now, right?
We do. The chances that happen go down with the replacement, but-
The same share, the same share?
I'm just giving an example of what one repair could cost.
But everything you have now is pretty-
It is. We're in great shape.
I think we can look at fuel, but I, but contract repairs needs to stay where it's at.
Yeah. Let's see what, let's see what we can do. I'm happy to push it down a little bit. Let's see where we are. We'll take on a little bit of risk, but not a lot. Other questions?
That was all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Are we prepared, and Gabe, are we prepared to move to special requests at this point, or have we covered everything else in the budget? Or am I jumping ahead too much?
Uh, you know, we went through the, the requests at our previous workshop, general fund workshop. I'm happy to address any questions there might be, but-
Well, this is his first.
No, no, he, he's talking about general-
About our last council meeting, so we've already reviewed all those, and if you have any questions on those requests, staff's happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, you were, you were in Canada when we did that, so-
I was. Did we make a decision on which ones we're going to fund?
Yeah, the direction of the council was to, was to take the proposed budget and include three increases in staff, which was a shift firefighter, an additional police officer, and emergency manager. The only unfunded request would have been an animal services tech, full-time, some additional staff in the rec center, and we have a roof repair at the police department that eventually we're going to have to take care of, but, but not this year.
And what about all the other special requests, the non-staff special requests? What, what did we decide?
The, the good news is, the vast majority of those are one-time, which would just be cash, fund balance, and we're proposing that that would, those would all be funded.
Okay. Everybody's okay with that? Everybody's good with funding that out of balance? Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Kim reminded me, I guess the only, any, any questions from anyone, the only outstanding is whatever those dollar amounts for the nonprofits, the charitable organizations, who and how much we'd like to donate to, that's really the-
And, and I wish Mary was still here. My question on that is, we, we have not done this in the past, we've done the chamber, but that's a different deal. Picking and choosing special requests, or should I say, community services and community to donate to is a little challenging, because you donate to some, and the others are going to say, what about us? And that's, so what does, what does council think about? I have no problem with those, the, the entities she mentioned are great, but what about, it's a bigger implication there. What does anybody else think?
Excuse me, Mayor, I just want to point out, and, and this has been in the budget since before I started here, but we do, on an annual basis, contribute to three organizations. They are the Assistance at the Rape Crisis Program at the Women's Center. So for as many years before I've been here, so more than seven years, we've contributed $1,000 to that program. The other one is the Mental Health, Mental Health, Mental Retardation.
Make sure more.
$2,000 to that, and then Safe Haven of Tarrant County. The idea was that our citizens are provided with that service, and so that's, that's the reason that, I think that's always been in the budget. So those are contributions that have been made and continue to be made.
Thank you for clarifying that.
What was the amount, was the question?
It was 1,000 to the Women's Center, 2,000 to Mental Health, Mental Retardation, and 1,000 to Safe Haven. So that's 4,000 that's been in the budget for many years.
Okay. What do folks think about adding the ones that Mary mentioned, which were Community Link, Eagle Mountain IS, Eagle Mountain ISD Foundation, and Meals on Wheels? Is that the three? If I'm correct? Okay. What do folks think about that? I'll start with Cindy.
Mayor, I think that we've already done our due justice for Community Link with the big program. They did not qualify in any way for that grant, and we still gave them $7,500. So I think we've done our service for them. I, I think the only one that I would like to add at this time would be Meals on Wheels for 1,000.
Charlie?
I would like to go with Mary's suggestion. I like what she's doing. It is services that we are, that our citizens here in Saginaw receive.
Valerie?
Who exactly does the school want? It goes to a scholarship, but for what?
They, the school gives out, the foundation gives out multiple scholarships. I was at the gala this year, they give out 100 scholarships, I think, to huge number to, to kids, graduating seniors going to college. They vary from 500 to $1,000, to even a little more than that, many, many, I mean, it's a huge number of scholarships. That's what it would be for.
Okay. Well, the school, when it is on wheels, I would go with-
I think, since we're already contributing to three groups in our budget today, I, I, here's the fundamental problem I'm having. We're communicating to the taxpayer that we're going to take from them with the rollback, rollback rate. We're going to take from them the maximum we can take from them by law, and then we're having a discussion about what charitable organizations we're going to give their money to. So I'm, I'm, I'm just wrestling with that in my head as, I, I don't even like talking about it at this point. I think what we already have in the budget, we can certainly justify that MHMR, Safe Haven of Tarrant County, and Rape Crisis Center are things that I'm sure that both police and fire chiefs will attest to are valuable assets for our community and could barely be characterized as a nonprofit organization. I feel the same way about Meals on Wheels, because we do have seniors that live here that are, are receiving that benefit. I, I feel the same way also, and I, I feel that way about our food bank, I feel that way about the Education Foundation, because we have seniors, my daughter being one of them, that will be applying for scholarships going off to college. But I, I just, I don't like the idea of telling the taxpayer- But I just, I don't like the idea of telling the taxpayer, "We're going to take your money, and then we're going to divvy it up to the nonprofits of our choice." So, I'd rather keep what we've got that's been in the budget forever and not talk about expanding anything.
Knowing that we are contributing to three entities already, I am fine with those three and not adding, I mean, if, I would say maybe $500 to Meals on Wheels, if anything, just because of the numbers that Mary had projected, that told us about in the last meeting as far as their services to Saginaw. So, I would like to help them out, but not for $1,000, maybe 500, if that. But I'm fine with the three that we have now.
I've gotten mixed messages from the group. I'm fine, I'm fine either way, honestly. I'm glad Kim reminded us what we already give, so that is good to know. I'm, I'm fine keeping it as is, because I don't, it gets real complicated when you start picking charitable organizations. Folks can give, they're going to say, "What about my church? What about my this? What about our scouts?" You know, there's lots of organizations that are very worthy, and I don't know if we're necessarily in the business of supporting all those. We support in other ways. We provide resources and manpower to a lot of these folks. So, I would be happy keeping it as is, unless anybody is just really, really dying to give somebody some money. Everybody okay with that? And I apologize, I wish Mary were here to speak, I know she wishes she was as well, but, so for today, let's keep it as is. Is that good? I have one other question on special requests. When I was looking at here the other day, it popped into my head. I saw a special request for $300. Seriously? Do we have to, you have to come to us for $300? I mean, is there, should I, should we set a limit or a minimum where it needs to come for us as a special request? I don't see $300 as anything that we need to really...
And Mayor, I have to say, that's administration, those are the ones that I'm responsible for, and I just have to say, we're going to try to fund them with our current year budget. It's just, I guess, we, I've been focused on the overall big budget that I didn't have a good enough, I didn't have time to really look to see that we can absorb those things, but we'll try to do that. It was just the whole list got put on and...
And I know, I know you want to be transparent, air in the air transparency, and I appreciate that. I just think, and I want to see what the council thinks, in the future, I'd like to say, if it takes, don't come to us for something under $1,000. Is that reasonable? I mean, really, can't that be, be absorbed, dealt with other ways, and really bring it to council? I don't see that we need to, what do y'all think?
Unless it's 350 times.
No, no, you're right. But if somebody needs to buy a new pencil, I don't want to come to council for stuff like that. It's just, that's just one thing that struck me, so I want to just bring that up.
Well, Kim is, is the accountant, and to expect something in that level of detail is, it's expected, so appreciate it, Kim.
You're right, yeah. All right, Gabe, what else? What else are we, Cindy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have one question. This is on the information technology budget on page 120.
Feel like we're in church flipping the hymnal.
All right.
And Patrick, would you lead the singing, please? I'm looking at the line item for office supplies and expenses. It looks like it's been a consistent $100 request every year. It's for proposed 1920, it's also $100. But it looks like they've spent $2,201 this year. That's a pretty significant increase, and I'm just curious what that is, if you happen to know. And just so we can kind of be prepared for something like that in the future.
I don't know off the top of my head, but we can look in to see what that is.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm about to need a new one of those as well. Mine is not, I don't know, it doesn't always send out emails when I want it to, because I know Patrick got an email from me the other night that I sent out two weeks ago, so, oops. So, yeah, we may, we may want to ask for new iPads eventually, but, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't work for time-sensitive information.
I know, it's just, that's just weird, very strange. What else? Gabe?
If there's nothing further, I just kind of want to recap the marching orders. So, we're going to advertise for purposes of our rate hearings, the rollback rate, that doesn't mean that's the rate we'll ultimately end up with. It can always be lower, can't always be higher. We're going to look at fees across departments, especially non-resident fees. We're going to look at fuel, the fuel budget, potentially adjusting that downward. We got your concurrence on the nonprofits to keep the existing three that we support, with the reason being, they provide services to, or there are available services to our residents existing, and then staggering some of the position start dates in the new request. So, if I've missed anything, let me know. If not, we're ready to stay till 5:00 on a Saturday. I'm just kidding, I've got a birthday party to go to this afternoon.
Mr. Mayor, you mind if I recap the targets that I had communicated originally in those areas? So, the target in franchise fees, this is a revenue target, it's a reduction of 58,000. The fee schedule itself, the target is to attempt to pick up 165,000 across all fees. The expenditure side is to adjust the fleet maintenance downward in expense by 72,000. We're hoping that most of that can come out of fuel, and to Kim's point, that contract work associated with our maintenance cannot be predicted, I understand that, and we need to keep it the same, but 72,000 is what I'm targeting there. And then the economic development, reduction of 98,000, I want to make sure that that's not lost, and if we need to continue to have a discussion about that here, I know that we've had, I know Mary mentioned that she doesn't want to see any cut in that department at all. That number includes several incentive, discretionary incentives. I would like to see those discretionary incentives be put, pulled out of that budget line item altogether, and that be discretionary to fund balance in the decision made at the council level, rather than at the economic development level. So, that's the 98,000 that I'm referring to there.
So, just on that point, you know, we're a year and some change into a new program in economic development. The decision in last year's budget was to allocate ongoing money for incentives. Our intent is that if it's not spent in the current year, that that is set aside specifically for economic development. You know, we don't have any big fish this year to incentivize. Two years from now, maybe we do, and that ongoing amount is available to do that. I just want to touch on a point we talked about at our council meeting. The more commercial activity, and especially sales tax generating properties we can get in the city, the less our reliance on property tax becomes. As you know, sales tax funds 10 police officers and equipment, so the more retail, restaurant, the less property tax we have to look at.
And if I may add, those incentive dollars, it's discretionary for council decision, but none of those incentive dollars are discretionary on a director or staff level at all. So, I can't just award an incentive. That money is set aside so that the council can make that decision. Just wanted to clarify.
That's a good point, yeah. And we also moved some of that discussed, that money to the big program this year as well. We moved however many thousand dollars into the big, the grant program, yeah. So, we've already moved some around. Would it be best, and as Patrick mentioned, to have this as a non, as a discretionary item in the fund balance, or as part of the standard budget? That's really what we're questioning. And how would that work either way?
If I can weigh in, so, it doesn't really matter to my budget either way, because again, those dollars are not for any sort of operational or departmental use. What it does, though, for me, like with the Applebee's incentive, for instance, is that I keep detailed track of administering incentive agreements. So, it just makes it accessible within my budget to look at as sort of a one-stop-shop. It doesn't really make a difference to me, again, operationally, other than because I keep close track of whenever payments are sent out and things like that, then having it right there within my budget is convenient, so...
Well, Applebee's is a commitment. I mean, it's already, that ship sailed, and we have to fund it, $48,000 for the next three years. So, I don't see that as being a part of the cut. What I do see is, I want to, I want to remove any recurring incentives that are baked into the economic development recurring budget, just simply because we're touching the rollback rate this year. And if we can push that back into fund balance, and it not appear as a recurring commitment year to year, then we can reduce that line item, it backs us further away from the rollback rate, which I'm certain gets everybody angst back down. So, that's, that's really what I'm thinking, in terms of reducing that particular budget line item by the 98,000.
You know, as long as we can still have money available for Alora to lure folks in, and if we can agree that, hey, it comes to council, it comes out of the general fund or wherever we put it, then I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that Laura has that in her toolkit as an option for pulling people in. We may hit on something that would be great if you spent X number of dollars, and I want to keep that as, available as an option for the council.
And I would like to point out that it does make a difference whenever I'm talking to a group and they say, "Well, is the city committed to, you know, helping out? Do you offer business incentives, that kind of thing?" It does help for me to have an amount. It does help for me to say that there is a specific line for it, because that shows to outside sources that council has voted to commit, instead of, well, we can take it and see if they'll commit at that point. Does that make sense? So, that is a reason why, and again, and I prefaced this last year, it's not an issue of how much you want to put into that line, how much you feel is comfortable, because all that is just going to be going right back into trying to acquire business. So, that's a decision completely for you guys to consider, but it does, it does kind of give me an extra tool when I can say, "They've already committed to X amount." So, just something to think about.
Yeah, one other point, and our big program is just kind of kicking off, and we have several of the first applicants that have been approved, but you'll recall, this year, we've, because we don't have dedicated funding for that program, we've taken money from the incentive line item. So, if there's a desire in the council to continue that program going forward, I would bet to you that once we have the before and after pictures of our first five or six, it's all of council member Fars' neighbors that have applied, but...
Thank you for pointing that out. I have recused myself from every one of those.
He's a great spokesperson for the program, but anyway, I just, right, I just want to say that, that that's money I think that, that we could use for that program, in addition to any, you know, incentive for brand-new businesses or business enhancement, so I would, I would caution the council in keeping the base budget.
Well, and as, because once we see some, some action, some activity, folks see, you know, they're going to ask the business owner, "How'd you make this improvement?", and they'll say, "Well, I got a grant from the city." And that's going to cause more folks to come knocking on our door.
Well, and not, not to add a wrinkle of things, but I think we could take that program to our industrial users and say, "Would you be interested in fencing or landscaping?" The problem is, because the sites are bigger, like a Trinity railcar, instead of a $5,000 request, it's going to be 25. And I think that's something, as the program evolves, we should consider, and people would benefit from, and the business community would benefit from as well, but all things just to keep in mind.
And city manager? And I agree with you in that sense, I also agree with Todd, but, and it's great that we have this money available, but all I see is money going out. And I'd like to know, what, how many businesses do we have lined up now that we're looking at bringing into Saginaw, say, within the next six months? Because I'd like to see some revenue generated from, you know, all of this effort, and I just, and maybe I'm just not looking in the right places, but I don't see a lot of revenue coming in based on the money that's going out in this department.
Sure, so, to clarify, I wish that I could say economic development worked that way, but unfortunately, it doesn't. So, the metrics come with time. So, you're looking at a community that's never had the initiative before, and in the first initial years, simply getting the word out to community partners, simply actually kind of reframing what the community is seen as, simply reaching out to, again, like our Workforce Solutions Group of Tarrant County, said that the representative had been there since 97, he's never had anyone from Saginaw ever speak to him before. Starting to build on that, starting to let people know that we are available, that, starting to address some of our policy issues that have to go into place, starting to figure out how that goes. It takes time.
How much, how much time are we looking at? I mean, are we looking at months, or are we looking at 10 years?
Councilmember, Big Horse, give you an example. So, restaurants, there's a lot of emphasis on restaurants and desire for new restaurants. We're getting boxed in with new restaurants in Fort Worth. Why? It's because we don't have available space that's suitable. So, you'll recall, was it Peace of Mind Furniture, they're now Saginaw Furniture, and they have a logo that's eerily similar to other logos, but that space is vacant. Does that mean we can go get a, an IHOP to go in that space? No, it does not. The IHOP is going in Fort Worth. So, absent some new developments and new opportunities, the brand-new stuff like you're seeing is going to go in the newer developments. The existing redevelopment is very difficult, and Alora's working with brokers and some of the property owners in our older strip centers to try to get a reuse, so the redevelopment, especially in our existing commercial corridor, is really difficult. It's not as easy as the brand-new stuff, which we have in short supply. Now, the square will be our immediate fix to that, but immediate is not so immediate. Once they begin construction of the street, it's probably 18 months before we see new businesses, because we have to have utilities, a street, so I am with you, I want to see it happen tomorrow. We have a few kind of one-offs here and there that have been good, so Wingstop came into an existing commercial strip center, which is great. We'll have a few of those here and there, but we're definitely working on it.
So, do we have anything waiting in the wings right now?
Yes. Unfortunately, I'm not able to share a lot of it, because when people are just kind of looking around, seeing if there's space that's appropriate, usually those businesses don't want you to kind of pre-announce, because they haven't committed, and if they decide to pull out of the market, then residents can be upset and say, "Oh, we thought we were going to get X, Y, and Z."
I understand.
And we didn't, so...
But this is something that I would like to see in executive session talked about more often, just so we know that, what is going on.
Sure.
And that it would benefit the city to fund this department.
Oh, absolutely, and again, it does take time. Unfortunately, it's not an overnight thing. And I will say that one thing that I struggle with, and I take full credit for some of the time delay, is because I find a lot of, especially the space that's already existing on the ground, a lot of the brokers and property owners will quickly want to put in uses or businesses that I don't feel is the highest best quality for our residents. So, if it was simply a numbers game, I could have, I could easily support brokers putting in more fast food and vape shops, easy, and I could tick those numbers up. And I don't feel that that is appropriate, and so I purposefully work with them and take that time, and I stand behind that. So, unfortunately, I'm sorry that it's not, the numbers kind of ticking up quickly, but that's just not the field. It's just not in the best interest.
Well, I was just kind of curious, you know, what was going on, so...
Lots is going on, lots, lots, lots. We've had, it's been constant churn, constant since I got here, so lots of activity, and unfortunately, about 70% of things kind of fall through, or they take longer, but everything that we're doing, everything that we're building right now is a, it's coming to realization in the future. Again, it's just not an overnight thing.
And again, I don't expect it to be, but I just kind of like to know that something is happening.
I guarantee, yeah, and I think, you know, I think any time that you'd like to ask Gabe about updates, he, I'm open with him, he knows what's going on, he'd be happy to share it with council. Thank you.
Are we back to the budget question?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, I just want to bring this back into the $98,000 cut. The reason I propose this is obviously, I'm, I'm working a metric to get to the $800,000 figure, with the $400,000 worth of new revenue, and then the $400,000 that we need to find within the existing budget. This is just one of those... dollars that we need to find within the existing budget. This is just one of those components. With the discussion on staggering hires, I think that that helps offset some of the need to cut that deep. So, staff might have an opportunity to look at whether or not we can offset some of that suggested cut with the staggering of the new hires, especially the emergency management position and the police officer position staggered three months into the year. But the only way that I could come up with that eight-hundred-thousand-dollar new revenue figure was this metric. And that's why I'm restating those targets. And, Laura, not to pick on you, I know that any new econo, any new economic development endeavor requires seed money before it becomes fruit money. So, I know you're still in the seed money world. It's just, and, and again, not to pick on you, when we're approaching the rollback rate, and we're talking about new revenue, the focus that I have are these two guys right here. They're first. And I'm sorry, you're second. But, but that's, I'm not, I'm not picking on you. I'm just telling you, these guys are first.
I, I would agree that that is a good, take care of safety first, good job.
So, the question is, you know, this money, do we want to leave it in the budget, or take it out and have it still come out of fund balance? Because we still could potentially get requests, incentive requests. Is council okay with saying, "These will come to council, we will", okay or not okay, and the money that is okay would come from the fund balance? Are we okay with that?
I am.
Because that's what we're saying. That's what we're saying. That's what we're saying. That's how this would play out. We don't know what the dollar figure would be, how many, no idea. It could be the same way for the, the big grant as well.
Exactly.
The big program, whatever it's called. So, either one of those, are we okay with that coming out of fund balance?
Would that leave her with her seed money that she needs, and, and her line item that she, that she needs to show these new businesses, that we, we, we're supporting this?
I mean, would it be enough to say, you know, "This is what we've done in the past. We've given this much to, like, Applebee's. We're, we're paying out incentives right now, and we already have a tracker that is doing that, can say, yes, council is open to XXX incentives, but it not, just not be in the budget. It's, it's avail, money is available, you could say, something like that. Is that acceptable to the council, as a way to phrase this and move this money out of the main budget, and say it's just available as...
Mayor, I'd like to make one comment. It's kind of like your, your personal budget. If, if you don't have a budget, and you kind of just spend out of your savings over time, it adds up. It's, it's, it's good to have a line item and know where you are compared to what you had estimated, versus before you know it, you've spent more than you anticipated. So, that's another advantage of having it as a line item in the budget. You know, you may approve an economic development agreement for thirty-five here and fifty here, it doesn't seem a lot, coming from the one-point-four million that you have in available fund balance, but before you know it, it, it could add up. So, that's another advantage of having a specific line item in the budget for that, that you may want to consider.
Well, I'll point out that we have two million reserved towards an economic development agreement that exists today. Yeah, so, so all I'm saying is, we've already harbored a big chunk of our reserve towards economic development. So, to speak to what you've asked, does that provide her the seed money? Yes, it does, because we get to make the decision as to whether or not we want to engage in a two-million-dollar investment in a brand-new person coming into the city. What, what I'm, the, if we were in a year where we were not asking for so much new revenue, I would be on board with carrying these dollars. But since we're in a year where we're asking for so much more revenue, this is an area where we don't have to carry it in the base budget. And if we, if we have to, we can point to the fund balance and take it from fund balance. Now, I think that this council is one-hundred percent committed to bringing in new revenue sources and new businesses. This whole council. I don't think that we need to have a line item in the budget to make that declaration.
Can I just say, again, although you and I understand that commitment, someone who's not from the city, who's going to be bringing in, which is, which is what we're trying to get, right? We're trying to get outside dollars into our economy. They are going to say, "Yeah, I've dealt with councils before. It takes a couple of seats to flip, and uh-uh, it's gone." Okay? So, that is the whole basis behind an EDC, is that it is saying there is a commitment to funds. That's what they care about. Is there a commitment? Not is it up to the political will at any given time, because that is not an unknown. It's an unknown. So, that is why I say, having a certain amount, wherever it's placed, doesn't matter. But having that certain amount that is committed specifically for incentives matters greatly to my ability to bring in new businesses that are going to be seeking incentives.
I agree, Alora. And I think to that point, let me just, let me reiterate. We have set aside two million dollars for that purpose. That is something you can point to any business that's coming into our city. You can say, "This is how committed they are. Here's the incentive agreement they just signed, and here's the money on reserve." So, that's already established. What's not established is what you just mentioned, an EDC. I'd love to see it. Let's set the EDC up. So, that doesn't require any money at this point in time to establish the EDC. It requires a commitment to move that forward. So, is there anybody on the council that is opposed to the EDC?
So, creating the actual corporation is the EDC, but again, it being funded is what matters. Nobody actually cares if there's just a corporation with no funding behind it. It's the funding mechanism that matters. So, I understand what you're saying, but I can't just go out and say, "Oh, we have an EDC," because they're going to say, "Oh, so it's funded." No, it's not.
So, the only way it's funded outside of us appropriating funds out of fund balance is next year, when the time comes, instead of voting for street maintenance, those funds are either split and diverted into an EDC, or we decide we're not going to fund it out of tax dollars, which is sales tax dollars. So, we don't necessarily have to make that decision this budget cycle, but what we do need to do is, we need to get it established this budget year, so that when funding request comes up next year, we all make the decision whether or not that's going to come out of, or replace the street maintenance fund, or we set money aside from our fund balance to fund it.
So, just to clarify, the reauthorized street maintenance fund percentage was one-eighth cent, and that was established for four years. So, that election will not come back up for four years?
It was just re...
You're right. So, if we create an EDC, which we're not going to create it between now and September, when we vote on this budget year.
Right.
We need to make a commitment as a council to establish the EDC and take action on its funding next budget year. And I'm on board with that.
I mean, two, separate issues. I'm happy to, to talk about that. And yeah, I mean, it's an option. The street maintenance is one-eighth cent, which is the smallest amount that you can also apportion to an EDC. But, I mean, it's essentially creating a separate account where you would put in incentive dollars and everything. So, again, it's, the line in my budget for incentives is really what exists in the absence of having its own fund as an EDC. Does that make sense?
It does.
And so, although you're correct that I can say, and I do, look at this other incentive that we have proposed, or that we have, that our council has approved, right, for two million dollars. That shows their commitment. But I'm telling you that what a developer's going to look at is, "Okay, but that was for a roadway, and that doesn't come around a whole lot." I'm not asking for a roadway. I'm asking for some assistance in relocating. I'm asking for some assistance and da-da-da. So, again, doesn't have the weight you would think it would. I mean, in Flower Mound, for instance, we would have forty-plus incentives operating at any given time. And I'm telling you, if we didn't have an amount set aside annually that we could say is committed, that we would lose deals. So, just speaking from experience.
And that's a, that's a fair point. Our agreement with the square is participation in infrastructure, that we stand to benefit in the assessed value because of that infrastructure. I would not characterize that as a true incentive agreement.
Well, I, I...
But it requires funds, and, you know, roughly half of it is from the utility fund. I see where you're coming from, but, you know, you...
We're willing to negotiate.
Sure, you either want to...
Incentives sorts, yes.
Oh, it is, it is. But you either want to fund a program, or you don't. We do it kind of piecemeal, so. And it's one of those things, you get what you pay for.
I think allowing the, allowing the department to operate is a commitment to the department. Anything beyond that is something that we can put in or pull out without abandoning a commitment to that department. I mean, funding it to the level in which it can continue to operate is a taxpayer support for that department. I mean, the alternative is remove all funding from it. Then that's, that is a, we don't want the department. I think what you're hearing from at least me, I don't know about everybody else on the council, is that we recognize the seed money need. We need that department to operate. But we've got to rein in what I believe to be recurring cost reported on the budget in a budget year where we're approaching the rollback rate, and we're asking for so much in new revenue. This is an area where police and fire take precedent. It's a year where police and fire take precedent. And we make another decision next year.
Mayor, if I just may, I just wanted to add one more thing. With this being a very new department, I've seen, over the year and a half I've been here, a lot of excitement from people saying, "Oh, my goodness, Saginaw is serious. Finally, they're serious about development. Finally, they're serious about business. Wow." Okay? I think that the perception in the business community, in the community outside of Saginaw, for bringing in new business, if they were to see that there was approved a budget with specific incentive dollars, that then the incentive line was taken away and made ambiguous, that that is going to tell them, "Okay, maybe, maybe not." It's still so new, I would just caution against making major changes like that before we do have an established reputation, or established department, you know, going forward in operations. That's just...
What was the rest of council think? Cindy?
So, how many businesses are we talking with right now?
Oh, that's, it's difficult to say. I would say, if you include the developers, which is a lot of the times who I'm talking to, not a business owner, but a developer or broker who is then going to get businesses in to their space once it's built, right?
Okay, let's talk about businesses outside of the square and Belt Mill.
Sure.
How many are we looking at?
I would say in the twenties, thirties.
And what is the, what, what do you think the probability of them, you know, moving to Saginaw is? How many of those?
I think it, I mean, it varies, honestly. Like I said, about...
You're feeling, how many do you think out of those twenty or thirty that you think would really come to Saginaw?
I would say in about, by the end of five years, because again, things stagger. It's not like they're going to come in tomorrow. Some of them are waiting for space, some are looking for other. I mean...
Council, council member, give you a good example. Fuzzy's Tacos, right? If you don't leave, love tacos, I would kindly request a person leave the state of Texas. Tacos are delicious. Fuzzy's Tacos wants to come to Saginaw, Texas. We have nowhere to put them currently. If we were to put them in an existing, for example, former Peace of Mind Furniture, has no grease trap, has building issues that prevent its reuse. Could we potentially put fifty thousand dollars or incentivize them coming into that space? We could. But it takes dedicated funding, for example. Does that make sense?
Yes.
To speculate on what may or may not come is kind of hard, until we've got a place for them to land or a plan for redevelopment. You know, fifty thousand dollars, for example, this came up in the citizen summit. The Landmark Hotel, I'm sure was great years and years ago. I think it's kind of moved beyond its prime. We could very easily approach the ownership of that and say, "Hey, are you willing to do a reuse of that property?" Fifty thousand dollars, whether it was demolition, or reconfiguration, what have you. That's the kind of projects we would be talking about to get end-users, if that helps put it in context.
But again, you know, I'm still kind of looking for some income to support this department. And, you know, so I was just kind of curious, you know, what we're looking at in the next year?
So, I mean, again...
Are you talking at zero for the next year?
Unfortunately, I don't control private businesses, right? So, I'm, I'm the advocate to try to bring them in, and I do the best that I can. But at the end of the day, I don't control if the lease rates are too high, if they decide they can get a cheaper space in Fort Worth, right? So, I just do the best that I can. What I can say, though, is, again, it takes time, because development takes time. Obviously, with the square, that right there, over time, you know, helps to pay. We've also got, you know, other big mixed-use projects in play right now. That brings in income. I think that filling space that's existing brings in income. Business retention, obviously, sets income.
Yeah, retention is going to be my next question.
Mm-hmm.
What are we doing to retain some of the businesses, and how can we help them so they can bring in more money?
Sure. I don't know that this is a budget question. So, I'm happy to talk about it, and I know we're going to...
Sales taxes, keeping them people here brings in, you know, they make sales, that brings in taxes for us.
And I'm happy to discuss it. I know we're going to be having an economic development workshop coming up at council, and we can get into more of the details. But obviously, with the building improvement grant program, we're doing retention, we're doing business retention meetings, major employer meetings, broker breakfasts, a lot of that. The city of Saginaw has a less than one percent commercial vacancy rate currently. We've maintained that, and we will continue to.
All right, I don't want to interrupt, but Mr. Farr needs to leave. Anything you want to say, Parton?
Yes, I want to thank staff very much for the hard work you've put into this budget. It's, every year, you guys do an excellent job in doing forecasting, keeping us on track. I, I certainly appreciate the effort by the council, and what this level of dialogue has been today. My wife and two kids left this morning at six o'clock on a flight to DC, and I've got to catch up with them. So, my flight boards in one hour. I'm hoping that traffic is, traffic's good. But I appreciate everybody's hard work in this workshop today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so, yeah, and that was a good point, Alora. We will have a workshop coming up. So, I think a lot of these questions can be discussed there, so that's a very, very good point. In this, you know, this incentive agreement, or incentive piece of the puzzle, you know, why don't we consider pulling out part of it, and not all of it, and recognize that, you know, there's still money available in the fund balance, if necessary? Say, with fifty thousand now, we, we knock it down to twenty thousand, twenty-five, what it would be. That would cut us down a little bit, pull it out of the main budget, which I think was the big question, realizing that we've committed other economic development, you know, incentives in the past. We've got money available, so just that we are, as we say, open for business. And the, the existence of an economic development department, you know, sends that message as well, so...
So, just, just one follow-up question on that. We had a proposed dedicated amount of fifteen thousand per year for the building improvement grant program. Would you want to reduce by twenty-five thousand, but also dedicate fifteen thousand specifically for the building improvement? Because right now, it's been funded out of the incentive amount. I am confident that the building improvement grant will continue to be popular.
Well, we have fifteen thousand in there right now, right?
Uh...
What's in the budget? Well, I'm looking at page one fifteen.
What's currently in the budget is fifty thousand for the economic development incentive line, and fifteen for building improvement grants.
Right. So, they're both in the budget currently?
Currently, yes.
Correct. But we included a, that includes a request of fifteen thousand.
That's right, because we had fifty in this current fiscal year, eighteen, nineteen. You transferred fifteen of the fifty...
Right.
...to establish the building improvement grants. The budget added back fifteen, so you were to a fifteen for building improvement grants, and fifty for economic development incentives.
Right.
So, the combined proposed for next year is sixty-five thousand.
Right. So, I'm, I'm saying we leave the building improvement grants as is, because I think we're going to easily spend that and more. And then we cut the economic development incentive by some number. Half, what do y'all think? And then realizing that we do have fund balance available for any additional, and we'll consider on a case-by-case basis, any additional, any incentives. Charles, what do you think? Work of that? Everybody okay with that? Cindy?
Can we, can we combine the, the big and the incentive budget line item into a single item at fifty thousand? Because what we're doing, what we did this year is, you know, we've taken how much, almost twenty thousand out of the, the incentive program?
Fifteen got moved over to building improvement grant. Five thousand was for the consultant for the building improvement grant.
So, we had twenty.
So, we had twenty.
So, but we, we used up the, the big fifteen thousand.
Correct.
And then we've taken how much more out of the incentive?
There's only seventeen thousand earmarked left, so...
So, we've taken, you know, a huge chunk out of that. And, I mean, but it all went to fund the big program, so why do we even separate that?
I would say, accounting-wise, it helps to... I would say accounting-wise, it helps to differentiate between the two. I mean, if you decide on a total amount that you want to fund, we'll budget that amount, but I would, accounting-wise, and probably Alora to keep track of the two, would like to have two separate line items to keep track, because they are...
But they were the same, it was, it was used for the same purpose.
Well, at the end of the year, we're, we're going to transfer the amount that you used out of economic development incentives towards big, and we're going to adjust that line item to reflect the true amount. As you've approved these, I've kept track, so at the end of the year, we're going to move the budget. It, it's just purely accounting-wise...
But it's an incentive either way that you look at it.
Yeah.
It is, but it's just...
I mean, I just didn't understand why we just make it a flat $50,000 and just...
I, I would just generally say, and we're happy to reduce if that's the direction of the council. I could see us spending $50,000 a year in the big program consistently with the existing applicants now coming back and making substantial improvements. The current budget, and I understand the dialogue and appreciate, the current budget sets kind of a base level. Taking away from that base level, to me, doesn't make practical sense, given the amount of interest in the program just in the past three months.
Again, I'd like to see some return on that before we start dumping more money back into the same businesses.
Sure. But, but you are absolutely in the driver's seat on that. You and, and your colleagues here approve those. And like I, like I mentioned, pretty soon, correct me if I'm wrong, I think our first completed applicant was the, or near-completed applicant is the post office building.
It's complete.
When we have those before and after, and we can market those, we go from four applications or whatever we've had, maybe we have 20. And like I say, maybe we get some big fish like, you know, Trinity, where they're bigger dollar amounts. So again, we can reduce that amount, but I, I just don't see the practicality, given the interest and enthusiasm there.
For the big...
I wish I did it along the Boulevard more than, but anyway.
Well, for the big program, I, I see, I think we're going to have a lot of interest, but we can pick and choose. If somebody is a returner, they can take a lower priority over a new one. We can say, we have, we have total discretion for that. The council has total discretion. I also want to remind folks, let's say we put $15,000 in the building improvement grant program, great. I fully expect us to spend more, to get more interest in that, and we have the discretion to do that, to say, you know, I want to move $10,000 more, whatever, from this fund into here. We can do that. That is perfectly within our purview. And I want to keep that in mind, because I, I like the building improvement grant program. I think it's going to grow, and I think it's going to help. I think people are going to get, you know, excited about, hey, Saginaw's really investing in their existing businesses. This is not new, folks. This is folks that have been here for years. We're willing to put some money into these businesses, and I think it's going to help the look of the city.
And I would say a reduction in economic development at $25,000, the way I view that, is a reduction of potential for the big program. Until we get, you know, uh...
You just said we could move it if we had...
We can, but why lower it? Why lower the amount when there's been this much interest? If nothing else, we can do building improvement grant applications.
I think, I think what Patrick's trying to get at is more citizens are wondering why we're spending or budgeting so much money and we're not getting anything in return right now.
Right.
And like Alora said, it, it's going to take a minute.
It does.
But it's a lot of money going out that we're not getting back. And I see...
It's not a lot of money going out, and with the building improvement grant, it's a pretty quick turnaround. I can get those before and after photos to you just as quick as a contractor can complete. I know, but what I'm telling you is the building improvement grant can be funded out of the existing incentive. If we don't have prospects to incentivize, we can do building improvement grants. So cutting $25,000, to me, makes no sense if we're saying we want to prioritize these improvements, right?
Well, but in the...
So you're saying people want to see...
Citizens that we're, we're reducing that to help on the taxes, and you said you could still move it from the line to line. And you could even take it out of the general fund, could you not, if we needed it? Or wherever it is you have the...
Sure, one time.
Okay, so what we're telling the citizens that we're trying to lower something to help them this year or whatever, until we do get some economic development going, they can actually see it. I know they can see the big grants. I have no, I understand.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
They don't see a return on investment.
Yeah.
Right.
And absolutely, but in a year's time, given our, the Saginaw Boulevard, the vast majority
needs to be redeveloped, it's not reasonable to expect we're going to get, I don't know what people think, Academy or something on the Boulevard. I, I mean, we've got to have money to be able to chip away and keep going year after year.
We have it in the general fund, that's what they're saying, they're just...
Right.
I think we're picking apples.
Well, the question is where you want to put the money, where you're going to get the money from? The question, do you want to put it in the budget or do you want to leave it in the general fund?
My point is, if it's ongoing in the general fund, then we can spend it and not have to, you know, take a gamble in whatever the, the direction the wind is blowing each time. So I wouldn't advise taking away from especially a, a brand-new program. But whatever you'd like to do.
What does council think about the, you know, this? How do we want to proceed? We need to give Gabe some direction.
If we are really committed to doing this, then I think we need to put it just like you've got it. And it shows the people trying to come in that, yeah, we're committed to it. And if we start saying, well, let's just make one line item, is it really showing them anything? But I think we'll leave it like it's showing.
I think we need to reduce it and worry about the big, bring the tax rate down a little bit.
I think she's doing a good job. I think she has a lot of, a lot of potential businesses coming in, you know, and, and I think she needs those dollars to be able to do her job and to do it for her. If that's what she needs to show, I think it should stay the way it is.
Um, yeah, I, I'm still a little concerned, because we don't have any sort of numbers. I'm a numbers kind of person. I like numbers to support what we're doing. You know, and even the big program, I just don't want to send out, I don't want to fund a lot of applications upfront until we can kind of see what we get back after seeing the results of the work that's going to be done on these other businesses. I don't want to spend 50, 60, $100,000 and the city not get anything back. If we can use the $50,000 incentive program for incentive for new businesses coming in or even somehow helping retain businesses that are here, you know, so they can keep those tax dollars rolling in, you know, I'm, I'm happy for that. But I just want to see some money, I want to see a return on the investment. I just don't want to be pushing a bunch of money out the door.
Just one brief point that we haven't got to, we'll probably address it in our economic development workshop, but we haven't really even scratched the surface on kind of business retention type things. There's lots of things we could do revolving loan funds, you know, grants to existing businesses that may either want to expand, that all requires dedicated money, so...
And we are doing the work to research those opportunities. It's just a, a year and a half.
Well, it's, while it's great to say, you know, show me...
You've been doing this for more than a year and a half. I mean, not in Saginaw, I understand that, but I mean, you have a lot more experience. That's why we hired you as a director, because you came with that knowledge, you came knowing, not maybe people to talk to, but places to talk to and those sort of things. And I know it's...
Absolutely.
...an ever-changing world, so, you know, I'm really kind of hoping that we can see some money coming in from what's going on in this department. I mean, I'm not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, but you know, if I could see $10,000, whoa, I'd be excited, you know, just, I want to see those figures.
If it, I mean, again, if it's the will of the council to have those numbers, and you want me to, to tick up that number, I can do that. Will it be the quality? No, it won't. Because quality takes time to find and bring in the right people.
Alora is against that, or controls that as well.
Sure.
We don't need any more donut shops or cleaners or vape shops or things like that. So I think that's what Alora is saying. Quality's a little more challenging.
And if, if you don't fund, if the council chooses not to fund economic development or doing things different, all things yield to the status quo. So absent a change in programs, a change in development standards, I love a good donut. I don't know about five different places, but we better enjoy what we have, because if we don't change it and put money consistently to incentives, we're going to have all the things that I'm sure people gripe to you about. We have too many car washes, we have too many donut shops, so...
Too many taco shops.
I love tacos. That's, that's getting a little personal there, but...
Yeah, I'm just, well...
Okay, Alora said that it's going to take some time to get this going, okay? And it's not going to happen in this next year, basically, is what you said, right? It could take up to three, four, five years to get everything going.
Well, economic development's an ongoing.
I know that people have to plan ahead, but we're talking about this one budget year, okay? And so, and I understand planning ahead, I have a daycare, okay? I get it. But if you're projecting that nothing's going to happen in this year per se, maybe something does and it'll be surprising or whatever, or surprise you or whatever, why can't we not change it this year and then we add to next year?
The reason being, this year is more important than any budget year in the last several, our ongoing capacity to fund projects this year is cut in half and then some next year. So if economic development and bringing new business in, business retention is a priority, I would say don't cut that budget, because I can't promise you a year from now, we can put it back in.
Maybe we need to cut in other things that, that can be reduced.
Sure.
Maybe, maybe the travel and the, some of the, whatever, I don't know what you want to call it, conventions, some of the train, extra trainings.
Sure, some of the...
We need to look at some of that.
The marketing? Yeah, and that's a lot of the, the economic development, um...
No, I'm not talking about just an ED, I'm talking about across...
Citywide.
Maybe that's what we need to do, if that's what we have to do, because, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it can be all in the ED, I understand.
Sure.
But I'm sure there's places that we can cut other things...
Yeah.
...and not, not take it down to the quick, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I think...
I mean, the police was willing to give up something.
Right.
And there are number one thing with Mr. Fireman over here, so you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And one other thing that I need, that I'd like to say about economic development is that, you know, our recreation center, our library is very, very attractive to people. I mean, people come here because, and one, we, you know, our parks board, our beautification committee, Saginaw's quickly becoming a very popular place to come look at Christmas lights. I don't think we'll ever be interlocking, but we offer something different, because it's not one little tiny neighborhood where you can't drive through because it's so congestion. And I think those things are also going to be a huge contribution to, or an incentive for businesses to come in, because, you know, it's suddenly becoming an attractive place. You know, Project Dream Play, all these other things that are going on, those are going to be, you know, carrots to look at as well as the money. And people love this stuff.
That's a great point. As our city continues to grow, our ongoing, as we have more people to serve, it's going to continue to grow as well. Your, their requests for one-time things department-wide are, are going to continue. Facility-wise, I was talking with Keith, just not to get too off-track, we're, as we're finishing up here, but, you know, our rec center, we could put another $50,000 in it in one-time repairs, ceiling tiles, and that goes for all city facilities and all city things, so we'll take a hard look back at our existing budget, but we need to be very careful without reducing services, yeah.
I do have to say one thing. After you posted the thing on Facebook about the Dream Play and the handicap thing, two people from the school district called me and said, thank you very much to tell you all that. I was going to wait till the next city council meeting, but I just tell you now.
All right, so what I'm hearing, I think, from the council as a whole, that we keep economic development as is. I think that, that seems to be what the majority's saying, unless I'm misreading, keep it as is. We can, we can adjust or look at mid-year if we want to. We can move or move money around as well. So let's keep it where it is today. We'll talk about it mid-year, talk about what we want to change, if we want to adjust or not, so I think that's what we're saying. What else? At Saginaw Development, we've beaten that horse pretty good. Where else do we need to go? More of the questions, just council, about the budget as a whole. All right, so I think we've got some action, which you've already mentioned. So we'll post at the, the almost rollback rate, 46.9? 46.9? We'll post at that, realizing that we're going to try our very best to drive that number down as much as we can, with fees, with budget assumptions, with all these different things. We'll push, as much as we can, push that number down. I don't know if the council has a target where we'd like to get to, but lower's better. Is that fair to say from everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Tax rates is about as low as you can go.
I don't think we can, right? But, but lower's better. Lower, lower, lower number's better. Well, I, I would feel comfortable going to the citizens, saying, hey, we lowered your taxes by, your, your tax rate by this much. Yes, you'll probably pay a little bit more because of valuations, but we are pushing the tax rate down. Folks need to keep in mind that that's where the tax rate is today, that's where valuations are today, but those valuations will not stay the same forever. They will go up and they will go down. When they go down, we will get a, a reduction in revenue. So keep that in mind when you're pushing things down, that is dependent on, you know, market forces outside of our control. So that's just another way that, that's, if you cut too low, you get yourself into a bind once there's a correction, and a housing correction, which is going to happen at some point, who knows? So just keep that in mind, how this whole thing works. If that's all, I want to thank everybody for their time. I appreciate the efforts. Kim especially, Kim and Gabe and the whole department, that's a lot of work. We asked a lot of questions. Kim always has the answers, I do appreciate that. I appreciate staff, all the department heads being here today. I know it's a Saturday, appreciate y'all taking your time to come here and enjoy this with us. I am delighted that we're going to get out here before lunch, before noon. I think that's an awesome accomplishment, so. So we'll look forward to updates from, from staff. Counsel, if any other questions, send them to me, send them to Gabe, send them to Quint, to Kim. Let's keep this dialogue going. You know, this is, we're not done with this yet. We're still moving. We don't ratify this for another six weeks, so we've got time to adjust. The budget is not finalized, it's at a good point, but it is not done. So we just keep that in mind. Anything else?
I'll keep it up.
11:22, we're adjourned. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.